Welcome to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 2nd, 2025, and we are all here, and we will have a moment of silent reflection. And today, I thought about this a lot, and I thought I would like to dedicate our moment of silence to the two guardsmen that had, one who I think lost her life, and the other who is in very serious condition in Washington. And so when we have our moment of silence, if you could just reflect on their lives and what they've done for us, and then we will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I think we'll have a moment of silence and then the pledge. Pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That's really cool that we can do the pledge. I remember doing the pledge for some of the young people. We used to do that in school. I don't know if you still do that, do you? Awesome, awesome. It's more than just a pledge, it's how you feel about being in a country that's blessed. We were truly blessed country, and we're really truly blessed to have you young people here today. Try to move my chair up higher, so that's a little better. So we will review and approve the agenda. That's item number five.
So moved.
Motion from Hancock, a second by Drews, to approve the agenda as it is. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, a recognition of new employees. New employees hired September 2nd through November 24th. And that's, we had a little presentation where we all got to meet some of the new employees. That was kind of nice. There's a whole list of them. I'm not going to name them all, but it's attached to the agenda, so. But we appreciate, there's a lot of enthusiasm as we go forward with our new employees, and we hope that they find joy in working here and that moving forward. So we'll move on to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses the Consent Agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The Consent Agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular Agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen from the consent. So is there any citizens that want to remove any of the consent items? Seeing none, how about the Board members? Is there anybody from up here on the Commission that would like to move a Consent Agenda item A through F?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve A through F on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Drews, a second from Hancock, to approve A through F. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Sign here, non-motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, items from the public. Speaker request form is required. Action will not be taken during this section on any issues brought forth that are not properly known. Speakers under this section will be recorded in a minute by name and area of interest. So I do have one speaker request form today from Ms. Sarah Pauli. If you're, Sarah, if you're in the room, thank you. Come forward and just state your name, and then you can, we roughly like to give you three minutes, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Pauli. I am again coming today to request that you fund the library in full for 2026. I reviewed your agenda, and I reviewed the PDF attachments that you guys had, and I'm a bit concerned because in those, the agreements, it says that the library has to provide full services to all county residents. However, it does not guarantee any minimum level of funding for the library. And I really question that decision to make them agree to provide services without any agreement for funding, because technically, within that agreement, you could decide to give them whatever level of funding, and they'd be required to provide services equivalent to the services that Rapid City residents receive to these, you know, rural Pennington County residents. And I think the library needs some sort of long-term, stable funding, an idea of what kind of stable funding they're going to be receiving. And honestly, I think that should be funded in full. The library provides invaluable services, and that our society benefits from as a whole. I know I spoke two weeks ago on this, and I'm going to be here every time I can be to speak on this until it gets solved, because this is a matter that is very important to me. I'd also like to call out Ron Wyffenbach. I believe you are the chair?
Yeah, it's Wyffenbach.
Wyffenbach. I saw the Facebook post that you made, posting the salaries of the library staff, and I also saw the deranged commenting that you did in the comments of that post. I know it was deleted. I did take some screenshots just to show my husband, to make sure he got to see that in case it was deleted before he got home from work. I think that your behavior was below the office that you hold. I think as a public official, there needs to be a certain level of decorum, and I hope that the people who elected you saw that, and I hope they change their mind next time, you know, the elections come around, because that was truly beneath the office that you hold. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And since you approached me personally, I can explain to you that I represent thousands of people, not just one person or one entity. There's a lot of stuff that went behind the library, negotiations you're not even privy to. You come in this morning, your conversation is not in full, and we'll discuss that today. But we've been in negotiations with the library. And I'm not going to argue with you. You had your three minutes. I'm going to respond to what you said, so people understand, okay? So I posted the salaries of the library officials, because I had people ask me for the library official salaries and for the expense, the financial reports, which I don't have privy to for whatever reason, their public record. You can gather anybody's information, all the people that work in the county here, you can just go to a website. We are transparent here. Everybody is listed on that, and that's the way it works. And my post is not deleted. I just deleted the comments, because I've never been so rudely treated in my entire life over an issue, from the very beginning to the very end. Hopefully today we'll bring some resolve for it. And for your information, I was one of the only people up here that voted not to defund the library, which you failed to mention, of course. But I'm going to go from there, we'll move on. Item number nine, Stevens High School FFA presentation. So if you're here, you're able to make your presentation. Hi, guys.
Hello.
Girls. We appreciate you coming here, so you have the floor. You just want to explain who you are, and then let you go forward with your presentation. And do they need help with this, Jordan? Are there?
Yep, we got it down.
Perfect, okay, you got the floor.
Yeah, so we're the Stevens FFA chapter, and we're here today to discuss how urban development impacts agriculture and natural resources.
You need to know your names.
If you could give us all your names, too, that'd be perfect.
Thank you.
I'm Ty Hoffman.
I'm Jacob Fisher.
And I'm Sophie Fenner.
And I'm Abby Timian.
Thank you.
So agriculture, land is vanishing as cities grow. So as our cities grow, our ag land is vanishing, as it is getting sold to developers and turned into suburbs. Our pastures are becoming pavement, so with that growth, it isn't all necessarily bad, because it does provide more job opportunities for people, but it also is getting rid of our agriculture land, and it brings challenges for those of us who raise and take care of our land and feed, like raise our own food. So with those challenges, it is pretty much a constant pressure from landowners to sell their land with cattle prices dropping and everything else in that. But both have impacts on our environment, because with cattle ranching, there is those pesticides, and in farming, there's those pesticides that run into our waterways and do pollute our waters. But it's not all cattle ranching, because there is also those fossil fuels from factories and industries all over our country.
All right, so what is urban encroachment? Urban encroachment is the expansion of towns and cities onto rural and agricultural lands. It includes new homes, roads, businesses, and industries. Urban encroachment often replaces or changes the use of farmland, rangeland, or natural habitats. It impacts key natural resources like air, soil, water, and wildlife. Population growth, demand for jobs, housing, and services are all driving factors of urban encroachment. Over the last five years, Rapid City has gained almost 4,000 people. In the next five years, Rapid City is projected to gain almost 7,500 people. All of these people need jobs and services and houses.
Okay, so let's kind of get a background on this idea and this issue. So the United States is currently losing about 2,000 acres of productive agricultural land every day to urban expansion. Now, since 1990 alone, across this country, we've lost more than 31 million acres, and that's been converted into housing, roads, and commercial use that puts the future of agriculture in jeopardy. South Dakota as a state has seen a steady growth as well, especially around Rapid City, Sioux Falls, and the Black Hills region as a whole. And it really affects more than land, it affects the water, wildlife, and soil across the entire ecosystem. So we're trying to figure out how can we balance population growth with land and resource conservation for a more sustainable future.
From a pro-development perspective, it does create job opportunities, housing, and economic growth. So with that, with us growing our cities, it is having more people come into our towns, and that does mean we need more job opportunities and that economic growth for our society. It expands our tax bases, so we do get more money from more people coming in, which means more room for expansion and more room for everything, all the sorts of things like that. It can increase our property values, so we will make more money for more people moving into our town, and it will help us grow. Significant economic and social growth with development and expansion, so with that, we are making more money, and we are getting more tourism and industry and all that, even though I know this past year was really great with that.
And then, from the agricultural perspective, not only are we seeing the loss of a livelihood and a way of life, but we're seeing the loss of an irreplaceable resource, which is our farm and ranch land that our society cannot survive without. Now, rising land prices make it extremely difficult for young producers in our community to start out, and even harder for existing operations to expand, because ranchers simply cannot compete with developers with current land prices in our area. On top of that, it can also put a large strain on water resources. We're seeing this in Rapid Creek as the city continues to expand. Overall, it reduces long-term sustainability of food production in our communities. Now, one way that producers are going around this issue is something called a conservation easement. So that is a legal document tied to piece of land that protects it from development or other non-agricultural practices for a certain amount of years, and can really be tailored to however short or long that landowner wants to either see that land continuing production or conservation for future generations to come.
Another important perspective with this issue is that of our natural resources. Urban development has a number of impacts on our water, soil, air, forests, and wildlife, with impervious cover increasing to about 26.6% of urban areas in the U.S. We have increased runoff, which means more pollution in local water sources like Rapid Creek and Pactola. And the expansion of cities and this impervious cover also compacts our soil, which makes long-term effects like the loss of vegetation on the soil and its ability to grow vegetation, as well as water infiltration of the soil. Urban areas also produce over 70% of our greenhouse gases, so the air in these cities and the surrounding areas are having a lower quality and are polluted. When developing, we often turn to deforestation, with urban tree cover in the U.S. dropping to about 39.4%. And this deforestation fragments wildlife habitats with a projected decline of species abundance in urban areas around 52%. These are all significant issues that come with urban development, but to combat this, we have several things that we're doing, like green bonds, which allocate funds to environmentally friendly practices, and efficient urban planning, which can reduce emissions, allow for more people in less space, and accommodate for natural resources in these urban areas. There's also brownfields that we aren't using because of contaminated areas and hazardous pollutants in these areas, so they're not being used for much of anything. So we are trying to figure out how we can clean these areas up and reutilize it for buildings or agriculture or something that we need other than just an open field.
Some positive economic and social impacts are: it boosts the local economy, expands access to goods, services, and infrastructure, brings cultural diversity and community growth, and can bring education and collaboration between rural communities and urban communities. Some negative economic and social impacts are: it drives up land prices. For example, that top picture there is 12 acres right off of Highway 16 that is currently for sale for almost $3 million. It drives up the tax prices, or it drives up the land prices of all of the land around it, making it almost impossible for ag producers to expand. It also drives up the property values, which drives up the property taxes of the urban, or of the agricultural producers in the area. That bottom picture is a new Sanford Hospital that's going up. It is going up on 80 acres of land that is currently being used as grazing land. When that hospital goes up, we're not just losing a piece of land, we're losing a food source. It can, it risks loss of rural traditions, open space, and agricultural heritage. For example, if a family farm or ranch gets sold to developers and gets developed, it can, it is almost impossible for them to get that land back and tear down everything on it and start farming or ranching again. It can also create urban and rural tensions. For example, some farmers and ranchers think that urban developers are trying to push them off of their lands.
This issue is relevant to all of us, because we can see these local examples all around us, as Rapid City has several examples of suburban growth.
In the last 20 years, South Dakota has lost almost 1.5 million acres, which is about 74,000 acres lost per year, which is according to SDSU.
That top picture is of the new shooting range that just went up. It is going, or it went up on land previously used for grazing, and it affects all of the ranches around it.
That middle picture is the proposed Liberty Land, which would have an amusement park, sports complex, and housing. This would cover a large area that was previously used for grazing.
And then, this bottom picture here is of the new Black Hills Industrial Park, which is about a 400-acre new development on the south side of Rapid. So this industrial park is currently sitting on land that used to be an operating ranch. So one thing that might be of concern with something like an industrial park is that pollution in the air, soil, water, and soil compaction that can really be seen across the entire ecosystem.
And then, our old advisor, Ms. Hendrick, she sold her ranch to go back to school in Texas. She sold that ranch to her neighbors, who ended up selling it to a private developer for turning her cattle grazing land into a private airport.
So this is a housing study that was done by Elevate Rapid City's 2025 Housing Report, and it shows the correlation between rent prices and vacancy rates in our community. So as you can see, rent has increased slightly, but vacancy rates have skyrocketed over the past couple of years. And that goes back to a couple of issues, one of which is that the salaries that people are currently receiving isn't enough to compensate for rent prices in our community. So we need to find ways to be more efficient and effective at utilizing what we've already developed, instead of going out and building new things when we can be fully utilizing what we have already built and developed.
Because there are so many different perspectives of this issue, it's important that we work together to find a common ground. This could mean building up instead of out, and just efficiently planning our cities, so we can have clean water, healthy soil, and open space for its residents. Urban consumers rely on farmers and ranchers, while agricultural producers rely on local markets. So this is a problem that we have to tackle together, and it's going to require collaboration. The first step in this process is education and communication, which is why we have presentations like these, to reach out and inform the public and try to mobilize people about this issue.
And then, in this graph, it shows the amount of single-family homes, the amount of multifamily homes, and as you guys can see, in the past five years, the amount of multifamily homes has skyrocketed, just because the people aren't able to afford single-family homes anymore. In conclusion, both shape our futures. No matter what, we are still going to have to have that suburban growth along with our agriculture lands. Economic opportunities pressure our land and resources, so with the constant pressure to sell our lands, it is pushing farmers out of our lands, which is getting rid of our local food sources. But grow responsibly. I don't know if you guys have ever been to our mall, I'm assuming you all have, but I have never seen that parking lot full, and I have lived here my entire life. So one thing we're kind of imposing is that maybe we could turn that parking lot into either more businesses or put an apartment complex or something just out there, so it's not just sit in concrete. But we need to protect our agriculture land, natural resources, and our rural heritage, because once you sell your, like, once you sell your farm, you're never getting any of your history back from that farm. So all the families, like, all your previous family that has lived on that farm, you are never getting any of that history back once you sell that land. But our goal is to build communities without breaking the land that sustains them.
And then, these are the references we used in creating this presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Chair.
Very well done. We're going to open it up to questions. Commissioner Hancock.
I'm just going to tell you, that's one of the best presentations I've seen in a long time. You guys had your facts and your information straight up. Been saying this for a while, for infrastructure and everything else that makes a difference for not only the city but the county. But people forget about the ag community and what that means around them. So growing is always good, it's how you're growing, and it is efficient and effective. And in this case, I think we've done a lot of urban sprawl, and they're coming out east with some other developments and some other stuff that's coming, and I'm not pretty much in agreement with that. Again, working with a lot of ranchers and farmers in the different areas, and they're saying the same thing you are, except your presentation was excellent. So great speaking, wonderful to hear, and like I said, one of the best presentations I've seen in a long time, so you guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good information for it.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin, sir.
Yeah, thank you for coming today. This is, this is really happening in Rapid City. It's happening across the nation. And I, the Commissioners know that I've appraised real estate for 30 years, and I was often told that a community like Rapid City, if you're not growing, you're declining. There is no such thing as being stable. You're either growing or declining. And I think, I'm going to ask when I get done with this, what is the county's role in this? What can we do? I can tell you a few things that we are doing. We have a very aggressive planning and zoning department, and that zoning kind of dictates where growth can happen and how that growth is going to happen. And so, and that, you know, you can't stop water, but you can certainly divert it to keep it from doing hydraulics, and that's what we're trying to do with land use. As we grow, we're trying to grow in a manner that we're looking at ag land, we're looking at places that we can, where we can grow without disturbing the environment. We also have a 40-year comprehensive land use, so what that does is we're looking out 40 years in the future where we think we want the county to be. And did you guys, have you had an opportunity to do this presentation with the city of Rapid City?
We have not yet, no.
And before you do, I would suggest that you get with their planning and zoning department, so that you can kind of, they can tell you beforehand, you know, some of the safety mechanisms they got in place that addresses your concern. Basically, I don't, you know, appraising real estate, I wouldn't have that job if it wasn't for the economics. But deep down inside, I don't like growth. I want everything just to stay the way it is, but unfortunately, that's not going to happen. But on a county level, we can control how it happens, and once again, thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Drews.
So thank you for your presentation, and obviously, the work that you put into it took some time, and I presume that you're going to continue with that kind of endeavor in the future, so congratulations on that. I was a part of FFA when I was in high school, and actually had the opportunity, was chosen as one of the delegates from my FFA chapter to go to the National Convention, which was held in Kansas City at that time, I don't know if it still is or not. But it's a great experience, a lot of good, a lot of good things to come out of FFA, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Durk, sir.
So yeah, great presentation, and I think it was, obviously, I think before you guys were aboard, my wife was the FFA teacher at Stevens High School, Teresa Durk. So she used to be a county extension agent, and really bolstered the FFA program there. The one thing the county has going on right now is this issue with growth, and it's an issue between, you know, the expansion with what Rapid City is doing, and then, you know, what our county as a whole looks like as this growth comes in. And reading your presentation a couple of days ago, and again, it's excellent, so the, you have a comment in there about the loss of, you know, agricultural farmland at 2,000 acres a day. And what we're facing right now is the expansion of Rapid City going east. They just annexed about a section of ground out by the airport, which is currently ranch land that will, I'm assuming, you mentioned Liberty Land TIF. I'm assuming what they plan on doing is a TIF to do the infrastructure and that stuff out there. And so as we see Rapid City grow, and we see other things that are happening, and we have an issue right now with solar and wind projects wanting to come in to Pennington County. And I live south of New Underwood, so that area out there is my district. We already have one solar plant that is out by New Underwood, and then we have a current ordinance that we're working on to kind of put in some regulations, going back to what Commissioner Roskinak talked about, you know, zoning and land use and that type of stuff. One of the potential developers that spoke in front of the Commission a few weeks ago came up out of Texas on a proposed solar plant just west of where the one is currently at, New Underwood, so it'd be a couple miles west of there. And he came up and made an off-the-cuff comment that I did not question him on, because I already knew it was false, but he said that Pennington County in the last, I don't remember how many years, has actually grown in agricultural land and not lost agricultural land. And obviously, if anybody would see your presentation, you could tell that that's not an accurate statement. So anyway, if people that came and spoke to the Commission did their due diligence and research, as you guys have come forward with, it would be very well received, so thank you, great job. And a follow-up to going to the city, have you guys made this presentation to the ag It's an ag committee group that meets out of West River Electric once a month. Have you made that presentation there?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, folks. I'm just going to echo what everybody else here said, and we are facing the challenges of losing agricultural land. Agriculture is the number-one resource for the community of Rapid City. Today at noon, the governor is giving the State of the State address, and one of the things he's going to talk about is loss of revenue. Well, when agriculture is the number-one thing in your state, and you look at infiltration of what's coming in, we're looking at, I think Commissioner Hancock and Commissioner Durk both brought about, you know, solar, and what it does to the land, how much it takes up and everything. Appreciate your presentation today, it was awesome, and if there's any way you can help it rain on Commissioner Durk's land, he would greatly appreciate that, because it never rains on his ranch, so. I would like the audience, everybody, to give these folks a land, a long, a land. You guys are free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us come out.
Thank you.
Good speaking.
Anytime, thank you. Okay, thanks again, and then, Commissioner, we will move on to item 10, items from auditor, and I don't know if we need Sabrina here or not. She's here. Come on up, Sabrina, we want to see you anyway. Sabrina is our new auditor. She's taken over as of, what, two, three weeks ago, maybe a month ago?
Oh, almost a month ago.
And so we're pushing her hard, we're challenging her, and today, she's bringing forward some renewals of some on-off sale liquor licenses, so is there, if there's any kickback to these, or anybody wants to, like, not have these happen, let us know now, but otherwise, I'll look for a motion, so we could, but I wanted to bring Sabrina forward. If you want to introduce yourself, Sabrina, that'd be nice.
Sabrina Green, Pennington County Auditor.
Thank you. Okay, so 10A, if we could get some sort of motion here, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the renewals. Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the renewals of 1-59960, Highway 44, computer, South Dakota, and 2-3204, Summer Creek Drive, Rapid City, South Dakota.
We got a motion. Got a motion from Mr. Roskinak and a second from Commissioner Hancock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item B.
I'd move to approve the renewal of the following retail liquor license with Sunday sales, that being the Sally O'Malley Pub and Casino.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. I have a second. Second from Commissioner Durk, so we have a motion from...
Was it Roskinak?
Oh, was it Roskinak? Okay. Motion from Drews and a second from Roskinak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Sabrina, thank you, you're free to go.
Thank you.
Items from the sheriff. Brian, Mr. Brian, you have the floor, sir?
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And in front of you today for our annual vehicle replacement requests, and I'm requesting three different motions. One is to purchase some vehicles. Our two motions are to purchase the vehicles from two different places, and the last motion is to declare some vehicles surplus for trade. And on the trade vehicles, the Humane Society has requested one of our vehicles. We believe that the trade value is about $1,000, and I would be in support of the county declaring that vehicle surplus to gift to the Humane Society if the commission was so inclined. I think Commissioner Wyff and Bach and I and some of my staff have had a couple of really productive meetings with the Humane Society, and I hope to be able to bring the next year's contract back to the next meeting. I think that they're looking at taking some of our recommendations and possibly working with Box Elder to offset some of Pennington County's costs. So I think in good faith, offering up a vehicle with about $1,000 worth of value at this time would be appropriate. I stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Sheriff Mueller, and I appreciate that. We did work diligently with the Humane Society, very impressed with their movement forward. And I think that you're making an appropriate motion here to have that happen. I mean, if anybody, I have talked to the mayor at Box Elder and told him that the Humane Society would be coming forward to look for some assistance. It's an important part of our community to help take care of that, so they're willing to sit down at the table with us and make some negotiations. So I'll look for some motions here from my commission. We're kinda hesitant this morning for some reason.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So Sheriff, your vehicle replacement plan, what is that?
As far as, what are the timelines and what we're doing for vehicle stuff?
Right. So what is a determination as to, you know, basically, on your rotation plan mileage, I'm assuming, you know, if it's in different stuff, accidents, whatever the case?
We have about 40 vehicles assigned to patrol and about 62 unmarked vehicles total across all four divisions of the office. 12 specialty vehicles, which mostly are, eight of those are search and rescue vehicles and some EVOC vehicles. But our general vehicle replacement philosophy is we'll run a patrol vehicle till about 130,000 miles, and then we repurpose that vehicle to other divisions until it hits about 160,000 miles, and then we... We do, you know, occasionally you'll wind up with a vehicle that's been wrecked or that it has a lot of mechanical problems, and we'll choose to get rid of those a little bit earlier, but that's the general philosophy. And then we try to take some of the vehicles that hit that 90,000 to 100,000 mile range and assign those to patrol supervisors. So that's the philosophy that we've used the last few years.
All right. And I know I think I spoke about this in January or February, but the county as a whole does not have a fleet management plan, and we don't have a handle on how many vehicles we have. I had Walter send some stuff, and Jordan, I think when you came on in April, I'd sent some stuff, but it's fine. But as a whole, the county needs to get a handle on our fleet management and how that's being maintained. And I think it ties into, it's not only surpassing the vehicles, it's the maintenance of the vehicles and how we do that. And I think, you know, we had had some discussions months ago about internal fleet maintenance and how we could probably benefit countywide in managing our fleet as a whole versus everybody doing it independently, so.
Correct. And I'm 100% in agreement with that. We're just waiting for the information from the commission office on the other divisions, what vehicles they have, and then I think we should sit down and push that forward sooner than later.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of four vehicles off South Dakota State bid from Liberty Dodge Ram and three 2026 Dodge Rango, a Pursuit rated, and one 2026 Chrysler Pacifico, all-wheel drive.
Second.
I have a motion from Durk and a second by Hancock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to motion two. I just wanna say something in regards to the fleet, and we're working with the city too on things that we talked about, Brian, about maintenance buildings as we've been selling some of our buildings. They are looking to relocate on Highway 79 and looking at synergizing some opportunities there that would maybe allow for some more of this to happen, for the sheriff's buses, all that type of stuff to keep them indoor, and so that's something. So looking for a motion on item two.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of two vehicles off the Iowa State bid from Carl Chevrolet in Des Moines, Iowa, and that would be two 2026 Chevrolet Silverado PPV white.
I'll second the motion. A motion from Durk and a second by Wyff and Bach. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item number three.
Make a motion to declare the following four vehicles a surplus property for the purpose of trading in toward the vehicle replacement and equipment purchase. And one is going to be Unit 82, 2018 Dodge Charger, Unit Number 64, 26 Chevy Tahoe, Unit Number 70, 2017 Chevy Tahoe, Unit 21, a 2012 Dodge Caravan.
I'll second the motion, so a motion from Durk and a second by Wyff and Bach. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Chairman, if I could ask for clarification and maybe a potential substitute motion, were we interested in giving that vehicle to the Humane Society? If so, I think we'll need a separate motion, maybe to pull that one off.
Okay.
Okay, it's, yeah, for the trading in, that's one of the vehicles you have is a trade-in. What number is it?
That is...
Unit 21?
Correct.
So the motion, yeah, so it's not going to be a trade-in, so Unit Number 21 will just make a motion that Unit 21, the Dodge Caravan 2012, is not gonna be traded and it's gonna be surplused and donated to the Humane Society.
And I'll second that motion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, that was a great opportunity for the Humane Society. I know they're struggling over there, and that'll help them a lot.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Brian, thank you, sir. Items from the highway department, and today we're gonna have a bridge inspection overview by KLJ. And Sean, Joe?
Let's see if I can figure out where to plug this thing in at... Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. With me here is Sean Mayfield with KLJ. While I'm doing this, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Good morning, everyone. Sean Mayfield, KLJ Engineering.
How are you, Sean?
Are you a bridge inspector, Sean, yourself, or a bridge inspector and engineer?
I do have the certifications, but I have teams that do that.
Okay.
I'm just...
You're the boss.
...the management side of it. Technology's fun. I can use the PDF if that'll... There you go. All right, while this is pulling up, I'll let Sean do his thing.
Sean, if you just repeat your name again and where you're from, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sean Mayfield, KLJ Engineering here in Rapid City. Just as just a brief overview of the bridge inspections for 2025 that we perform for the county. 68 total bridges were inspected throughout the year, this year. 62 of those bridges had no changes, which is good. Four of them actually had improvements that were made, and this would be either a full replacement of the existing bridge or preservation of the in-place bridge. And only two had noted deficiencies that we documented for information that's prepared for the state. And those were embankment erosion and the condition of decking. There were no critical findings, and a critical finding is something that needs immediate attention, needs to be addressed immediately. So that is very good, no critical findings. First, I'll talk about the full replacements. This is on Highway 1416, just east of Box Elder. Old bridge from 1924 was replaced with a triple sail box covert, shown in the picture here. I have it listed as November completion, and it was completed. Punchless items, just cleanup work has been completed, and we prepared the initial inspection report that gets documented in the state's inspection system. So it is now classified as a new structure on your system. Second full replacement is on Thunderhead Falls Road. This is a bridge that was completed this summer. Actually, it was completed in October, Bridge 317, 313. And one that's under construction now is Hammerquist Road. I believe it's almost done too, isn't it? Those are actually being overseen by the DOT. And the preservation project was on Old Hill City Road, Bridge 314, 432. And replaced deficient beams, patched abutment concrete, and clean and painted the railings. And this was prepared through the South Dakota DOT's Bridge Improvement Grant Program. Now we'll move on to the noted deficiencies. This is a bridge on 159th Avenue, Bridge 59291. And as you can see in the picture, it has deteriorated piling and some embankment erosion. So these, this bridge has actually been on a 12-month inspection cycle. Typically, it's 24 months. You have to inspect a bridge every 24 months by national standards. This has been 12 months, and it is programmed for replacement, so we'll continue to monitor this for any changes. And the last noted deficiency is on Mystic Road, and this, as you can see with the arrow in the picture, the timber decking is starting to show where. And with that, in the circle are the bolts that actually hold the decking to the structure underneath are getting hit by the motor graders, the case that you've had, plow trucks. So the county has added gravel surfacing to alleviate that, and it is programmed for repairs as well, to replace the decking. And any steel that has corroded, that'll be repaired as well. So I wanna talk a little bit about the inventory as a whole. Pennington County has 127 structures, 106 of those are bridges, and 21 are box culverts. And as you can see, the majority are in good, fair condition, which is very good. So just an example of a good-conditioned bridge, this is on Palmer Creek Road near Palmer Gulch, built in 2009, and it's in very good condition. An example of fair condition, Bridge 314, 371 is on Sheridan Lake Road. There are eight bridges very close together on Sheridan Lake Road, all built in 1974, and they all show different variations of concrete deterioration. Nothing that needs immediate attention, it's just in fair condition, so it just continues to be monitored with the inspections.
Is that a picture of Commissioner Roskinak fishing off that bridge?
Nope, I don't think it's me. But I do got a question.
Go ahead.
I go across those bridges maybe two or three times a week, and so those eight bridges were replaced all about the same time after the Rapid City flood. So with that being said, if they're all built at the same time and they deteriorate at the same time, you'd think that we're gonna replace them or repurpose them all at the same time. So is there some kind of a program where we can do one or two going forward, or how's that gonna work when it gets to the point where they're all the same age and they're all deteriorating at about the same speed?
As far as the replacement, not until they're to a point where they would require a replacement. As far as these, they would qualify for preservation funds through the state's big program, all eight of them. And that's something that Joe and I have talked about, is getting those on a cycle, not to do them all the same year, but to schedule them out based on the deterioration of eight as a whole. And then, yes, then you can essentially add life to each one of those so that you don't have to replace them.
So you wouldn't really have to replace the whole bridge, would you? I mean, maybe the decking on top or the abutments on each end?
You're correct, yes.
And the life expectancy of a bridge, a typical bridge is 50 years?
With today's technology and concrete and steel, they're 75 to 100 years now. So these built 50 years ago could easily see another 25 to 30, 40 years out of them with some repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is one of the poor-conditioned bridges. This is the one I mentioned before on 159th Avenue, near New Underwood. It was a timber, or is a timber structure, all timber, built in 1950. It is post for reduced load limit, deteriorated piling, degraded channel. As you can see, it's been eroding next to the north abutment, which is on the right side of the picture. It is on a 12-month inspection cycle, and it is programmed for replacement. This one actually has the new bridges designed for it, it's just getting that on the cycle for replacement.
Yeah, if I may, Commissioner, just for a second here on this bridge. It is programmed for replacement, and we've engaged with talks with the landowners on both sides. One of them is willing to give us easement to get this thing replaced, the other not so much, so it's kind of stalled out at that point, and that's kind of where we're at. We're still trying, actively trying to, you know, reach an agreement with the landowner. The nice thing about this bridge is there is a bypass or a relatively short detour to go around it. It's about four or five miles to go around either direction for this bridge, for it being load-rated. So it's not top priority, but it is a priority and programmed for replacement, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Question for Sean and Joe. So early on in the presentation, we talked about a bridge that was programmed for replacement too. And you may have explained some of that, what goes into that reprogramming just now, but what criteria is used, and is there a time element that's put to those when they're declared that they need to be replaced? Does it have to be within a certain period of time, or what's the process when you determine that a bridge needs to be replaced?
There's a number of different factors that go into that, load rating, condition summary. You know, the bridge that we just replaced on Highway 1416 with the triple sail box covert that you guys seen, it actually was in fair condition. So it wasn't actually qualified for big funds because it was in fair condition. The reason that it was load-rated is because in 1924, you can about imagine the heaviest vehicle that went across it was probably 20, 30,000 pounds, and now our vehicles are far exceeding that. And the design in 1924 just wasn't designed to carry the loads of today's trucks, and that's the reason that that one was load-rated. So, I mean, we look at the condition, the load rating, the use, the ADT, right?
Traffic use.
The traffic kind of goes into the factor. But I believe, Sean, if it goes down to three tons for a single or five tons, it has to be closed, correct?
Three tons, if you're posting for your bridge is three tons or lower, it is mandatory that it be closed, yes, because it is not safe to handle traffic.
And I believe this one is still, I think it's 12 or 13 tons for a single axle.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak, sir, you have the floor.
Joe, when does a bridge or a culvert become a bridge or vice versa? Because I had a problem out there in my district, and the guy claimed that the bridge wasn't in good condition, but we determined it wasn't a bridge, that it was a culvert. So there was some distinct measurement that...
Yes. There, so... There, so for a bridge to be a bridge on the NBIS or the National Bridge Inventory Structure or the National Bridge Inventory System, it has to be a twenty-foot or longer span. So like that triple cell box is, I think it's thirty feet.
Three, fourteen foot, so it is over the twenty-foot length, so it qualifies as a bridge on the system. If that opening is twenty feet or less than twenty feet, it is not considered a structure that is inspected on a biennial basis.
It may look like a bridge, right, and function like a bridge, but it's not considered a bridge that is mandatorily inspected every twenty-four months like the ones that you're seeing here. There's some other caveats to that. You know, when we replace bridges with culverts, if they're, you know, say you bury four sixty-inch culverts, well, if they're more than thirty inches or half the diameter of the culvert apart, they don't consider, they consider them independent structures so it doesn't meet that bridge criteria. So that's one way that we've gotten some of the bridges off of our inventory, specifically out in Commissioner Dur's district out there on Pedro Road going north. There's a structure that we replaced with three culverts in two thousand nineteen or twenty, so.
So on the bridge on fourteen sixteen, there are three culverts because they're buddying each other, they're classified as a bridge and not three culverts.
Correct, yes.
From a hydraulic standpoint, to equal what was there as the bridge, it was those three culverts which were required, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dur.
So Joe, have you ever, in this case, and I don't know the situation, I'll talk to you offline about this particular one and getting the easement. I had been involved in a situation wherein we had this issue and we went through a process of gifting a bridge.
I've never been a part of that, but we can talk offline. I have some other ideas on this structure as well, so.
Mr. Joe, on the fourteen sixteen, is that part of the highway we're working on out there with Box Elder?
So that bridge will be included in that, yes.
Sometime I'd like you to do a presentation on that and see how good we can work with people that are willing to work with us, Box Elder, on that highway that you've been doing out there, so.
On that note, I did just receive the agreement, a draft agreement, so that'll be coming in front of you guys soon.
Last slide, just condition improvements as a whole. In two thousand nineteen, there were twenty-four poor-conditioned bridges on the county system and that is now down to eight. So that's a testament to what's been done.
Yeah, on that sentiment, Sean put together some numbers, so since two thousand nineteen and since you guys implemented the wheel tax and allowed us to, the opportunity to apply for big funds, the dollars that we've spent on bridges and both replacement, preservations, it clips almost thirteen million dollars. Of that thirteen million dollars, the county's only had to put up about five-point-two million. So we've gotten seven million dollars back from both the federal and the state Bridge Improvement Grant Program. So as a testament to you guys for putting that wheel tax in place and allowing us the opportunity to apply for those big grants.
Thank you for mentioning that, so people understand that a lot of this money came out, when you're going to your licensing and you're paying the wheel tax, a lot of it's going to create the funding for these bridges. So people know that it's not just being wasted, you've brought a lot of these bridges under control, so.
Yeah, it's a testament to the team at Pennington County, our Sean Smith, who started out as our engineers, now our assistant superintendent, and Bill Welk and my predecessors and the team at Highway has done a fantastic job since giving the tools to apply for these, so.
Thank you. Sean, was that it, or?
That is it.
Any more questions from the commissioner or anybody you want to know anything else about bridges? And then now's the time to ask.
Got the expert here.
Yep. Appreciate it. I guess that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
Have a wonderful day. We'll move on to, get my glasses on here. This covers you again, Joe, right?
Yes, so this is, I believe we're on item B now, correct?
Item B, sir, yes. First reading ordinance, eleven amendment, criteria for installation, relocation, repair of expansion utilities, so.
So I don't know if Tyler wants to come up too, and he was a big help. The state's attorney's office was a big help in getting this stuff corrected. So we passed this initially, or you guys passed this back in, I believe it was July. Before that, it hadn't been updated since two thousand, I believe it was six or two thousand and seven. So after the passage, and it's been in use for about six, eight months, we had West River Electric and Black Hills Electric Co-op come to us. And we failed to realize that they are not considered a public utility. I'll let Tyler go into that definition here in a little bit, but we just updated some verbiage there, clarified ground disturbing activities within the right-of-way. So we've had some questions. Prior to that, it was excavations within the right-of-way and there was some debate on that. So we decided to kind of eliminate the debate and any ground disturbance in the right-of-way requires a permit. So we can make sure the county ditches convey the water that they need to convey and that they're put back in as good condition or better. And then also added the exemption for federal and state and local governments and then franchisee agreement holders. And then we also added a definition for hazardous utility. And then the utility scale, alternative energy projects are still coming to the board, so we didn't change that. So with that, Tyler?
Yeah, Tyler Sobczak, State's Attorney's Office, just really kind of echoing what Joe said. You know, the biggest, I suppose, lesson for us was that rural electric co-ops are not public utilities. There's a specific carve-out for them as not being a public utility within statute. So although, you know, really what I think the goal of this ordinance was, was to make sure that Joe's office has the ability to track who is doing what work. And all of this kind of under the, let's call it the umbrella of also what you have is our existing franchise agreements with these two companies. I believe one was entered in twenty sixteen or so and one a little bit longer than that. But each of these rural electric co-ops have a current franchise agreement, a contract with you, where there was just some clarification needed in ordinance, where our ordinance needed to reflect those contractual terms. And so a little bit of cleanup was done there to do that. Now, we did take some liberties with the subcontracting portion because, you know, ambiguity is never great with these franchisees. And so we felt that it was appropriate to extend the benefit for lack of fees associated with the ordinance to be trickled down to their subcontractors as well. Just makes things clearer for Joe, clearer for you folks, and also allow, well mandates that these people, these workers abide by the construction specifications, which is really paramount from Joe's perspective. So other than that, I stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, I do have a speaker request form from Robert Raker. So Robert, if you're in, where you, come on forward here and you're, you know, just for the record, give us your name and where you're from, and then we'll let you speak and.
Okay, I appreciate it. Commissioners, my name is Robert Raker, I'm the CEO of West River Electric. So today I'm standing in opposition of ordinance eleven. We fully support the coordination and working with the counties in the right-of-way. And I will say that I feel like we've done a great job doing that in the past. But this ordinance, it goes beyond coordination and in our opinion, it creates significant unintended consequences when it comes to reliability, emergency response and just our day-to-day operations. We raised the question about how some of these new requirements fit with the franchise agreement that we have in place. And I'm not really here, I'm not here to debate every issue that we have with that. What I would simply like is, we need to work closely with Joe and the attorneys to get this thing to where we feel like it's, it works for both parties. Right now, what I would say is that it doesn't. The other aspect is, again, we work well with Joe, but with the language in this, our concern is if you get a different party in there, we're going to, there's language that we feel we could be really concerned with. So some of that, you know, being ambiguous is a problem to us. So I just, what I'd like to see is more collaboration with the commissioners and the highway superintendent. And that's all I have, I'll stand by if you have any questions.
Robert, I got a question right at the top, but does anybody else have a question? My question to you, Robert, would be is have you had coordination with these guys going forward on this? I mean, have you been in concert on putting this together?
Some of it, now some of it came out, you know, I mean, the timing on this was difficult. They came out, you know, coming right out of, we went into a holiday weekend, I ended up getting it Sunday night in order to see what all the details were, so.
Do you have specific pieces that you want to address with Joe? What we don't want to do is get into a back-and-forth of ambiguity on the whole ordinance. If you have specific pieces, then maybe the commission would consider.
Yeah, we would gladly sit down and go through.
Joe, can you come forward, please? Trying to find some resolution here. Do you see what Robert's saying? And I mean, West River Elect is probably one of our better partners, could I say, or not?
I would say, yeah, I mean, they do a lot of permitting with our office and we've been good partners. You know, the previous ordinance was very, very unrestricted. And we've had some issues with, you know, specifically in Ross Connect's district and even out in Jerry's district with the utility companies coming in and just blowing and going. And we have, we had no recourse. And that's where a lot of this is coming from. These guys are very good to work with, they're, you know, they do what we ask and they clean up after themselves. That's not the case for everybody. So, you know, I understand where he's coming from. But, you know, we've got to work not just with West River Electric, not just with Black Hills Electric Co-op, but CenturyLink, Midco, Golden West and all of their subcontractors that come in. You know, we worked most recently with some of the SDN communication contractors that come in from out of state. You know, they're here to do a job, they're here to get paid to do their job, and they don't necessarily care the way that they leave our highways and our state, right? So that's where a lot of this specifications is coming from, is trying to make sure that we're upfront with the utility companies and their contractors of what we expect. If you go back and look at the previous ordinance back prior to May or Ju-, I think it was July when it was originally passed, there was, there was no, no regulation whatsoever. You know, it was basically left up to the highway superintendent and there was no specification spelled out in the ordinance whatsoever. So that's kind of where we're coming from. I think we can, you know, I think one of the biggest issues in speaking with Matt and Jesse, from, Matt from West River and Jesse from Black Hills Electric Co-op, is they didn't like the fact that the subcontractors got the permit, right? They want to hold the permit and then they can hold their subcontractors accountable. And to me, that's a different philosophy, right? Those subcontractors are doing work and we should have direction over exactly what they do, right? And that we can hold them guys accountable. I believe that was one issue that was brought up. I don't know if there's others that have been brought up since then.
That's one of them, Robert.
Yeah, that's one issue. I'll just quickly point out, you know, another issue that we're seeing is when it comes to storm restoration. You know, this thing is overly broad and when there's an issue and we're going to restore power, emergency.
Can you scroll down to the emergency stuff? There's a provision in the ordinance that allows for the emergency work, because we often have that with Rapid Valley Sanitary. When their, you know, emergency main break or something like that, you guys, as a utility, are allowed to go do the work and get the permit after the fact.
Joe, I mean, not that, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the commission, but because West River is a good partner, they've got some concerns. Do you see any issue of like getting together? I would be more than happy to intervene too and be there at the meeting or whatever, if we could get a meeting together and maybe bring it back. Is that, is that an issue with Tyler or you or?
No, I think.
I mean, it doesn't really change the outcome if we give, grant him the ability to, you guys have a better conversation and we'll hammer it out and maybe a third party could be there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I might suggest we continue this until the second meeting in January.
So we have a motion to continue till the second week, and a second. Robert, does that work for you?
Yeah.
That'll be our second meeting in January, is that correct? So that'll give us.
Be enough time for everybody?
That'll give us time over the holidays. So Robert, you're going to have to cancel all your holiday shopping and I hope you got that done. But anyway, I just think that it's probably in best order to do something like that. And we, West River, I mean, they're a great neighbor, we love you guys, and Joe has got a job to fulfill. So we have a motion to move to, Kerry, did you get that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Robert, thank you. Joe, Tyler, thank you guys. Just let me know if I can, if I can make that meeting, I'm going to be gone until the second, probably that first weekend in January.
Not allowed.
I could zoom in, Joe. Unless you don't want me there, of course. Okay, all right.
Takes more vacations than anybody I know.
I'm supposed to be retired, I took this job to help out, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dur.
Yeah, Joe, and it goes to West River Electric. So would you come forward the next time, whatever, whatever you guys have come to in some of the language, but put it in a memorandum if, when we have this second hearing and, or the, you know, the other hearing on this at the second meeting in January, put a synopsis together of what's been discussed and if you came to resolution and/or what you still have an issue with, and put it in the form of a memorandum and get it to Jordan to have on the agenda so we can look at this in advance.
Yep. Absolutely. I believe we can work it out, so. Thank you, Commissioner Dur. So we'll move on to item, which one are we on here now?
C.
Snow, C, right?
Yep.
Yep, right, C?
Yep.
First ordinance thirty-two and ordinance regulating snow. I mean, we got a lot of ordinance coming forward, I'm just going to tell the people in the audience, our commission is dedicated to going through all these ordinances and these contracts that we have throughout, because we have no central, really, location for everything. We have handshake deals out there, we got this and we got that. So we're really, hope people will bear with us as we go through all this, and it's going to be painful, but at the same time, and the outcome will be just like Robert had mentioned. If Joe's gone, or if one of us from the commission are gone, we have, you know, we know where this information is, we know the contracts we've signed, we know all that. So bear with us and as we move through these, but go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so this is ordinance thirty-two brought forward at the request of Commissioner Dur, I believe. I had this idea back in two thousand nineteen when I first started here. You know, you spend a lot of time up in Aberdeen or even anywhere East River, they have these in the city as far as snow removal routes, right? Being able to get cars out of the roadway to make plowing more efficient and not having to cause the plow drivers hazards and even the traveling public hazards. Trying to get those vehicles out of the roadway so we can do a more efficient and expedite the snow removal in Rapid Valley. Pennington County is unique in the fact that we take care of the largest unincorporated area in the state. And if it was a city, I think it would be probably the eleventh or twelfth largest city in the state. So that's what we're tasked with and I'll let Tyler speak as far as what he's found for authority, so.
Yeah, Tyler Sobczak, State's Attorney's Office. So this is one of those things from my purview that goes back to just the general idea that cities just simply have more authority than you do to do things. I think this is a fabulous idea. However, with the code as written, I'm not sure that this scheme itself is legally feasible. I looked at a number of counties, I looked at a lot of cities and really looked at the municipal code, compared it to the county code, and really just came back down to the same drum I've been beating for two years now, that just cities have more authority to do things with the roads than you do. And, you know, I think, frankly, I think the best way to initiate something of this, I'm calling it the prospective snow event ordinance, just in case I don't call it thirty-two. But I think there needs to be some legislative changes up top for this to move forward. I briefed this to you all a little bit, I'm not sure if it was read or not, but essentially there are caveats within Title thirty-two and Title nine that give the municipalities a lot of leeway and latitude to do what they want with the roads that the counties just don't do. When it comes to towing vehicles, it's my opinion that the county really only has, let's call it triggering or springing authority to tow vehicles, and really that's the abandoned vehicle statutes. When, and I'm stepping on the toes of the proposed ordinance 33 a little bit, but essentially there is a carve-out in statute for counties to tow vehicles that have been aban-, the term is abandoned for a period not less than 24 hours. So given that counties don't have that flexibility that municipalities do, I, it's my opinion that the best path moving forward is to use that abandoned statute to our benefit. Have some perspective, you know, surveying of these area, I think it's really Rapid Valley that we've been talking about. You know, go out a couple of times a week, take account of what vehicles are on the road. Have they been moved? Have they been not? Work out a process to tag these vehicles. And if we know a big snow is coming, crack down, crack down on the ones that are abandoned. Because I fear that the passing of this ordinance is not authorized by law. And so I think until some legislative changes are initiated, I think that's really the best with what you got right now. But I stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tyler. And I think, is there any questions from the commission? Well, I, I got one comment. Commissioner Dur?
Yeah, I'm just gonna comment that, you know, these are some of the things when we met about the ordinance and our enforcement efforts, particularly in Rapid Valley, that is an issue for the citizens that live there. And it's mitigating these obstructions in the county right of way. So my point at that point in time is we already had the authority by ordinance and by state law to go out and tag and tow. We just didn't have a mechanism or follow-through to go ahead and do that. And so getting back to your point then, Tyler, we're gonna have to have discussions as to which office is going to make a determination that we're gonna go out and do this and under whose authority. And again, I mentioned that it was a common practice in my day as a deputy to go out in Rapid Valley and tag and tow. And getting back to, and again, some of this ties into a nuisance situation, which we'll, we'll talk about later. But what I would like to see come out of this, I believe we already have the authority to do this. I appreciate your recommendation. What I would like to see is the board, this isn't the only thing, but, you know, the reason you can't find anything in another county across the state to deal with this is because no county across the state is dealing with an anomaly like Rapid Valley. And so I think that we need to look at legislatively. It doesn't look like the city is gonna lay hands on Rapid Valley in the near future. And so I would like to see some legislative proposal put forward that would give us, the Highway Department, the ability to go out and exercise authority over those roads and right of ways that fall under our responsibilities.
Yeah, and I even have, I think about these things at night.
That's good.
I know. It's a toxic trait. You know, I think just a little slight addition to the title, I think, would go a long way. There's a statute that I cite in the brief that I wrote you that says, this, I, I'm paraphrasing, but essentially the cities can manipulate the above statute as they want to fit their needs. I think if we just add it slip in and counties, I think that might go a long way for you guys. But that's just the way I'm thinking about it right now. I'll certainly look at the code a little bit more to see what, what else can be tinkered with. And, you know, by way of sponsorship comes up, it's a little late in the year to get this on for this legislative session, but, you know, we'll be toying around. Do they get a sponsor? Think about what that looks like and go from there.
Chair.
Commissioner Hatcock.
So I think we can still do the, the county website, the social media, local media and text alerts just to put that forth in a way that it's saying, please move your cars. We're trying to tow the roads. I mean, that can still move forward, Joe. Any area in that, that you can contact your, any, any type of media outlet, I think would be good for the county. Since at this time, if we can't move basically the ordinance forward, that gives us a buy-in for what's gonna happen later. You know, we've been telling you guys this. We've been showing you this through texts and other things. We need your help, is what it should say, if you could move your vehicles so we can basically plow the roads, health, welfare, safety for the citizens. I think that still could be moved forward without any, and I don't know what that costs. And maybe you have to look at that cost, what that costs as well. But I know we had talked just a little bit ago about Dustin doing it. And I know they do it for, snow alerts for county employees and stuff. So anything we could do with that, I think we should move forward still in that area. Cause that has nothing to do at this point with towing, unless you're still gonna do the towing. But it sounds like by ordinance you can't.
Yeah, I mean, if I may, Chair. That goes to, to our conversation yesterday, you know, trying this winter to get those vehicles out of the road and try and prep them, right? I mean, the saying for change, you gotta tell people, I think it's seven different ways and several different times before they, they, they get something. So I think that's a good opportunity for our office to work with the emergency management and get that, the text alert system and possibly look at sending a postcard to everybody in Rapid Valley to, hey, if you have an opportunity to get your vehicle off the road when it's snowing, do so.
We'd appreciate it, yeah.
Your snow removal will be that much better, so.
And that way they're ready for, if there is change, that we're showing them that we want to make that difference. We want to try and say, you know, public health, welfare, safety, we need your help. And if you do that, I think it's the first process in what you're gonna do, even with the nuisance, showing people that we're doing our due diligence before we start a process that might end up towing their cars in the future. Thank you.
I'll diverge back to the conversation I had with Joe yesterday about this particular item. And maybe Tyler, you could chime in on, on, on what we kinda talked about. Obviously, the one thing that Pennington County doesn't have a problem with is snow removal. When I was on the city, I heard that every time it snowed. On the county, they were, no problem. But like when these guys are plowing, there's, you know, Joe explained to me, there's more problems wrong than just plowing around people. It puts the drivers in a safety hazard. These types of things can all be an educational process. When we get to the point where we're towing people, we're really, we're putting a big burden on that person. I mean, they, for whatever reason, they may have. So we talked about, at some point, you know, obviously Joe's gonna come up with a plan. We're gonna do some alerts, like Commissioner Hatcock had brought forward, do some alerts, maybe do some social media posting, whatever else. We, we're building our new website, big beautiful website that's gonna be happening at some point. Cody may have a, have a comment on that today. But that moving forward, and what we thought about Tyler was instead of a towing is maybe, because the other part happens, if we tow somebody, then we're paying for it. And then the only thing, only recourse to get that money back is through, you know, put a lien on their property. So there's gonna be a lot of money from taxpayers that's sitting out there that are gonna be used on these nuisance laws and on these, on these towings that could add up real quick. So we thought maybe, maybe an order would be a citation that they were issued for leaving their car or truck or whatever. And then it could be some sort of graduated level or something that could be as simple as boom, we got a, we got a program that takes a picture of it. When I was with the city, we worked on, there was a problem we had with people with trash cans. They were, you know, so the, the garbage man, well, people would say, hey, they never picked up my trash can. So the garbage truck actually takes a picture of all these garbage cans, believe it or not. So if you call up and complain that your garbage wasn't picked up, they got a picture of it. And zoom, boom, baps, it goes to the person that is, you know, in charge of that area. And then a citation is not having to have a reserve for all this money that's gonna be sitting there. So it may be something you could think of versus towing. I'm not that deeply interested in towing people, cause once they've already plowed, why do you want to tow it? I mean, it's, they've already taken the chance that, you know, what we want to do is get people in a habit of understanding that they're screwing up their own driveway or, or street by not moving, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, certainly something we can look at. But, you know, I think there's, you know, a long-term goal and a short-term goal. And, you know, for the short-term, you know, we've got some recourse for now. And so definitely, definitely understood Commissioner Wyff and Bog and.
So we could just make no action on this prop, on this one?
32 and 33.
Are they together, Deb, or the?
No, they're separate.
They're separate.
Do you want them continued, Joe? What do you want us to do with them?
I mean, it's, it's completely up to you guys. I mean, these were, were really.
In here, do you show in red what the amendments are?
I don't believe. We just kind of explain it and outline it in the, in the memo there. There was some updating of the, the language to add motor vehicle. Added a definition of motor vehicles and then added what a qualifying snow event is and then authorizing a towing of motor vehicle found during snow removal operations. This ordinance, I think, probably still needs to exist because there is a fine with plowing and putting, depositing your snow in the roadway. We've several people throughout the county. And it's not, every time that we go out there, you know, we generally send people a letter, hey, stop putting your snow in our, in our right of way. You're causing adrift and causing a hazard for the rest of the traveling public. So I think, I guess, Jordan, would your opinion be no action on this if we don't want any change?
So what I would like you to do is we'll push it off. I'm gonna make a motion to defer this until the second meeting in January, incorporate the information presented by the State's Attorney's Office and then highlight in red what you think you need changed to fit what the purpose is that we can do statutorily. And secondarily, the comment I'm gonna make is I did bring this forward and it was relation to the nuisance complaints and the complaints that I'm getting from dozens and dozens of citizens in Rapid Valley in my district, talking about not only on the snow removal, it's about highway projects, actually doing a paving project and having to go around vehicles when you're doing construction work. And then the fact about towing vehicles, that's not a county expense. That expense goes back from the towing company, a hold on the vehicle until that is paid by the person that owns the vehicle. So the towing aspect of it is not a county expense, but that's my motion.
Well, I'd be, just, we got a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Oh, we got a motion from Dur and a second by Ross Connect. So, I mean, I, I get, I could vote on this today and put this in if it makes sense too, Jerry.
No, I, I wanna clean up the language, have him go back. And I think it makes it easier for everybody when you're putting these changes in, that you're putting, you know, the changes in red line, just like.
I apologize, I thought that was in there.
Just like you did on your other one, so.
Will this work for you guys, Tyler?
Well, I guess, Tyler Sobczak, State's Attorney's Office. I guess I'm not sure what legislative changes can come in, in January and February. We're already in December. That would allow us to amend this ordinance as needed, I suppose. Because if we can't do the prospective snow event as written, I'm trying to think of what other.
Cause are you adding in here definition of a motor vehicle? Are there things in this that would help you irrespective of the ability to have what you would deem to be a snow event?
So I, I think the ordinance worked as it was for our purpose, not allowing people to deposit their snow in the right of way. The addition was to put the motor vehicles in there and then allow us to get the motor vehicles out of the, the traveled roadway to aid in the, the efficiency of our snow removal. So maybe the opportunity today is to just deny the amendment and then it goes back to the old ordinance. I guess that's a.
That would be my suggestion.
That'd be my motion.
The substitute motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a substitute motion and a second. So everybody understand what the substitute motion is? It's denying this motion, so it goes back to the original motion. I think if we do this, I still think we should pursue this because we need to have some teeth in, because the same calls Jerry's getting, I'm getting on, you know, people in the right of way, people in the snow. I mean, and as Rapid Valley grows, it becomes more and more problems, so. And it's a problem for, for Joe's drivers. It's a safety, health and safety issue, which is, is a big deal. I mean, these guys are trying to drive around these vehicles and it causes whatever. So if we pass this, I'm fine with it, but I don't want to let sleeping dogs lie on this, if that makes sense.
Yeah, my follow-up comment to be to this is I don't believe it's too late for the legislative session. So if you can get some language put together, I'll, we'll bring in front of the commission. But I, I already have somebody I know that will carry the bill, so.
Perfect, to put us, to put the county in there. That's what you're looking for, the city and county.
Well, and there are things that, you know, when you amend one statute, you have to look at the whole to see if anything else needs to be amended as well. So I will try to talk to someone, a sponsor, and see when their deadline is.
If you run into an issue, could you talk to Commissioner Dur about that and just, he'll keep us updated?
Chair.
Yes.
I have a question. So, Joe, how many, you said you had a process. If, if you have someone that keeps doing that, you send them a letter. Have you had that many people call on, on snow removal? Or you've had that many problems with your snow removal in Rapid Valley, basically?
This isn't necessarily, what we've had issues with is say, Joe over here is plowing his driveway and he lives on Sheridan Lake Road, right? Well, his driveway goes out onto Sheridan Lake Road. So what they do, instead of pushing the snow to the side of their driveways, they push it either across our road and leave it in our ditch or they leave it on the, the shoulder of the roadway, which then, depending on the wind, creates adrift for, and then creates more traveling hazards for the traveling public. And then we have to go and remove that snow because it's now in our right of way. What this ordinance previously, as it was written previously, does is allow us to basically send a letter to the, that individual saying, hey, this is our ordinance, stop doing that. And if it happens again, then we have the authority to send it to the State's Attorney's Office and then they can, they can find that person, I think it's a class two misdemeanor, up to 500 bucks and I think 30 days in jail. So that's what the, the meat of this ordinance was prior to adding the vehicles in the snowway, uh, vehicles in the right of way.
So are the vehicles in the right of way a issue for the snow removal? Is that, and you believe that there's enough of that complaint that we need to do a towing and do a new ordinance?
So there's not complaints, right? It is our plow drivers out in the Rapid Valley area having to go around these vehicles and, you know, plowing people's cars in, plowing people's driveways in. The driveways are unavoidable, but the vehicles are avoidable. If, you know, there's several instances when we went out and took photographs in 2019 or 2020, there's vehicles that are parked in the road next to an empty driveway, right? That's where we see an opportunity to say, hey, change your process. And we understand that, you know, people leave at different times and during the day. But maybe for this instance, could you change your process the next morning and park that vehicle in the driveway? That way we can efficiently remove the snow and then you can go back to business as normal.
So I would think based on, hopefully due to enough media outlet areas in Pennington County, that that would help as well, that, you know, make some message they could remember to take their, their vehicles out of the right of way. And people seem to always, when they're doing the plowing of their driveways or their sidewalks or whatever, depends how big their sidewalks, are always throwing it in the right of way. So that message also needs to be in there that, you know, this is not okay. So there's gotta be twofold, you know, we don't want to tow your vehicle, but we're not gonna say that in there, but we need your help on these areas. And see if that makes a difference as well before you make a full-blown ordinance and towing people over something in the right of way. Cause like you said, when you had, you just, I thought you just said that you actually send them a letter if they are in the right of way already.
The, the snow, if they're plowing snow in the right of way, correct.
You see what I'm saying? So if it's a right of way issue, yeah. And I'll keep saying, the city has the same issue and I'd be curious to see how many they, they tag and tow. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Maybe we could find that information out.
I got a question for Tyler.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
So let's say we have a snow event and one of our trucks accidentally hits a vehicle that's in the right of way. Can the county go after them? Because if you're in a car accident and you're, I'm just saying legally to me that the county could go after them because they were literally in our right of way when this incident happened. That's just.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, it definitely could be the grounds of a contributory negligence, lawsuit for damages, things of that nature. But, you know, there's no one-size-fits-all when it comes to vehicles, you know? Someone could be driving real slow on the roads and just happen to slide into a vehicle. On the other hand, it could be overdriving conditions and be fully at fault. So it's a little tough to go one-size-fits-all, but certainly that'd be a remedy at all available for you.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor, so let's vote on that motion. And I just, I think that we're on to something here about having to give you some teeth to be able to do the job you need to do that the taxpayers expect, so.
Voting on a substitute.
Voting on a substitute motion that actually just denies this one. And then I think we're, it's gonna go back through the process. Am I correct?
Yeah, I'm, I understand. I'm gonna get in contact with some legislators later this week, I suppose, and see if it's, if the cart hasn't gone before the horse, I suppose, so.
So, everybody, Kara, do you understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you guys and thank you for the robust debate on that.
So item D is the same? Do we deny it?
So that's what we did.
No, that was C.
So I think item D, Tyler has some different, some stuff for you guys to go over.
Yeah, Tyler Sobczak, State's Attorney's Office. So, you know, this one is different than your snow, the snow event one. This is an ordinance that essentially, as it currently stands, it prohibits, you know, unauthorized dumping in the right of way. But it also, the new amendment would authorize the removal of motor vehicles within the right of way. Frankly, same song as, same song and dance as the last one. I think, you know, you've got your abandonment statutes right here. The sheriff has a vehicle, a statute that if vehicles are, you know, obstruction, obstruction. The sheriff has a statute that if vehicles are, you know, obstruction, obstructing the vehicular travel of the roads, or, you know, or just generally a danger to the traveling community, that those can be towed as well. So I, I think, you know, what we really have here instead, or kind of contrasting it to the snow event one, is you would be duplicating state law if you pass this ordinance. And a lot of us know that, you know, duplicating state law puts your ordinance at risk. And so it'd be my suggestion again to deny this one.
If I may, since, I mean, this ordinance already exists in statute, or in, it was amended, I think, I don't remember, a couple of years ago, to update the fine, but since it's already authorized in statute, would the motion then be to repeal this ordinance since it's already covered in state statute?
Do we have this ordinance in place right now?
Yes.
That would.
Well, what I think this one, I would like this one on the books still. I just don't want the vehicles added to it because, you know, there's the statute that says that it's, you know, illegal for a, I forget exactly what the term is, to dump a load of cargo or material within the right of way, and we define what we determine to be material or cargo. So I think it should stay on the books. I just think the amendment should be denied.
Okay, so basically, I think some of the, what we're getting to here is we have a process problem. We don't have a process in place to actually do what we need to do because, like Commissioner Dur said, he's getting phone calls, I'm getting phone calls about people that want this addressed, so.
If I may, Commissioner, or Chair. So in conversations through this, I learned that the code or the statutes actually deem the highway superintendent as a peace officer, which then gives our office or myself the authority to do what Jerry is, has done in the past, if my, if I'm understanding correctly, Tyler.
Yep, 3233-1 is the statute.
We, we may well be able to expedite this process in your getting rid of the vehicles in the roadway. I was not aware of myself being a peace officer, I guess I did, I missed that in my job description.
That's scary. Commissioner Dur, I think you were edging to say something about that.
No, I'm just going to go back and, you know, we're bringing a delight and it goes back, you know, you captured it pretty well. We were not taking care of the situation. We were not addressing these issues through our nuisance and enforcement efforts. There was a lack of coordination across the county. Who's going to do this, not knowing that the highway department had the authority to go ahead and do this? And so again, you know, a lot of this is already in state statute, and go back to what I said, you know, months ago, it's an education campaign, letting the public know, these are the, these are the issues. Coordinated effort, I talked to HR and Cody months ago about, in highway and planning, about putting together an informational campaign and stating that, you know, here is a new approach, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel, this stuff is already in existence. These are the issues we're having, and here is the approach that we're going to take. But I can tell you that not doing nothing is not working. So that's the whole effort of having this discussion, is identifying that we already have the authority to do this. I believe we have the assets to do it, and it's not a financial strain on the county to implement this, so.
Perfect. I guess we're looking at you, sir.
We'll get a plan together and bring that, do you want the plan just to go to you guys, or you want it back in front of the entire board, or what would you like?
I would like to see it in front of the entire board, because again, at the same time, we're educating the public.
Yep, absolutely.
That we're going to take this on more seriously because of the numerous amount of complaints. I mean, last night before I called you, I had two, two calls. I do make my phone number very available to people, and I love when they call so we can get down to discussion. So that being said, do we have a motion on the floor? No motion on the floor, so we'd be looking for a motion to.
Motion to deny would be my suggestion.
To deny this, because this is different than the one we already have, right?
Chair. The first reading ordinance, 33, we'll leave the ordinance as is and deny the amendment that was added.
So we have a motion on the floor to leave.
Second.
And a second, we have a motion from Haddock, second from Dur. Kara, did you understand that motion? Okay, can you repeat that, Commissioner Haddock, for our minutes?
Basically, first reading ordinance, 33, the amendment, we're basically denying the amendment and leaving the ordinance as is.
Dur, Commissioner Dur. So you get that now, okay? Perfect, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item E, Zack Maintenance and Snow Removal Agreement with the Scenic Township.
All right.
Tyler, thank you.
I can make the motion if you want, Joe, unless you want to do explanation.
That's up to you guys. I can make an explanation brief. This agreement, as far as I can tell, and our records going back to 1996, we have paid Scenic Township to take care of some of our roads down in the scenic area. And we, I believe the agreement was put in place in 2005 is what we found, the original agreement. Prior to 2005, we were just doing it on a handshake deal with the Scenic Township. So they take care of approximately 37.71 miles of road for Pennington County. It's a great help to both our wall divisions and our new underwood divisions. Currently, the new underwood division has about 68 miles per blade that they have to maintain. Wall has approximately 55 miles per blade that they have to maintain. So if they were to, if we were to not do this agreement, that adds another approximately 15, 17 miles that either our new underwood or our wall division has to maintain, who already have an exuberant amount of miles to maintain. You know, if you imagine yourself maintaining a road at five miles an hour, you know, when we get some rain, you can't get over all that many miles in a day with, with the moisture that we generally get. So the last couple of years, 2023 was the only year that we hit the maximum of 35,000, and that was towards the end of the year, and then they just chose to wait and continue it in 2024. So '24, we did 28, we paid them $28,590. They worked 285 hours. This year so far, we've paid them $26,550 for a total of 265 and a half hours. So we're sitting pretty good for this, this season. We'll see what winter and fall, spring brings this year, so.
Any questions from the commission? We get a.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2026 Maintenance and Snow Removal Agreement with Scenic Township Board of Supervisors with a maximum limiting amount of 40,000.
Second.
So we have a motion from Dur and a second from Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to item, well, actually, go into, okay, let me see, items from Human Resources, marketing the move to Concourse. So Cody, how are you, sir?
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, Cody Wiseman, Marketing Manager for Human Resources. I'm going to get the presentation up here in a second. There it goes. Okay, so I just wanted to take a couple of minutes here, real quick, just go through a brief presentation of what all we did to make sure that the citizens know that we moved out to Concourse. So if you have any questions throughout this, please let me know. So right away, the approach we took here was widespread multi-channel approach, just to make sure that we're getting everybody where the bat, everybody gets their news in different ways, social media, news, print, all that kind of stuff. So just making sure to reach out to as many people as we can to get this message out. Worked really closely with buildings and grounds, emergency management, and all the administration offices as well, just to make sure that we're getting the message out of what dates and all that kind of stuff, to make sure that everybody knew we were moving out here. So right away with media relations, ever since we started talking about the hours and everything, I've sent out six press releases to about 80 different contacts in media that garnered about 15 or more news articles. Those were just ones I could find online when just searching Pennington County moving Concourse, and there's likely other ones that were done in print as well. So got a lot of good news coverage there. Then, of course, we have digital outreach. So this is about, you know, website and search. So for our website, on the Pennington County website, we made a dedicated landing page with all the relocation details. This included FAQs, maps, resources, information, timing and everything, anything that they pretty much would need to know about the, the move and where we're going to be. And then also, we made sure to update all of the department website sections to include all of their, the new addresses and the new information hours and everything there. Also went through and got all of our Google Business profiles updated, so whenever you search for any of our administration departments, those do now reflect the current address and hours. And I also went through and got a couple drone images as well to get those uploaded so people can actually get a sense of place as far as where it's at. You will notice if you guys do go on to Google and search for like Pennington County Administration Building, one thing you'll notice is there are still images of the other building. Those unfortunately are something I can't take down, and it's part of Google's algorithm, and it will just slowly update, it's utilizing their street maps and everything there. So those should in time update as the address is now reflected on there. Also worked with Emergency Management to utilize their direct notifications, the system you were just talking about for snow removal. So we use that. It's their impact messages, that's to about 8,000 citizens who have opted for them. So we sent them two, two messages, one letting them know we are going to be moving this month, and then another one letting everybody know that we have fully moved with a link to that landing page I mentioned earlier, so they had all the information. Then social media campaigns, so this was one of the bigger ones to get this message out. So we had two different social media campaigns. One is currently still running. The one you see on the left was just letting everybody know we're moving. In those ads, we had just the date that the, or that the individual departments were going to be moving to Concourse. That ran from October 15th to November 10th, once we were fully moved. That reached about 80,000 people, 81,000 people. And then right now, starting November 10th and going to be continuing through the 31st of December, we have another campaign that is more targeted on what all these departments offer for services, that people are typically going in there. And this is where I worked with the departments to give me their top five services that people are typically coming to the building for. As you know, many people might not know exactly what the service is that each department provides, so this is just a way to give another push as far as what is all moving out to Concourse. So that one currently is at about 50,000 and growing, and again, will be continued on through December 31st. And then we also made sure we had quite a few print materials here, so we had the pre-move print materials at the very top there. Most of those were just kind of plastered throughout the administration building and in the courthouse as well. The one on the far right there, that top one, not only did we have that throughout the administration departments, you know, the treasurer's office did a great job of putting it with every single transaction, so that people knew that move. But I also sent out this poster to the other cities who, you know, those people who aren't necessarily watching TV or reading news or anything, but they do go to their community centers, so I gave them to the community centers so they can put them up as well with the QR code on how to get there too, as well as directions from Highway 79, Interstate 90, and Highway 44. Then we have the post-move print materials, those ones are the ones that are actually at the location right now, as far as the bottom left and the bottom right there, some postcards, as well as a map on how to get to our current building from the old building along with the QR code with those directions. And then we have a wayfinding floor map that's on the website as well, so people know where to go once they get here. And then we also worked with Lamar. They were very kind to give us some free billboard placements. That was throughout through the month of October and early November too, so had, you know, the focus there to get people to go on to the website, but making sure to point out that we are moving in November. So had those up for a few weeks there. So in conclusion, yeah, we just made sure to get out as many places as we could for media, and hopefully we reached a lot. We're never going to get everybody, but we sure did our best, so I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Haddock.
I appreciate that, Cody, and anything you can do as you listen to our snow removal, to put on our website, any texts or anything, social media areas that we can hit would be well appreciated. Like you said, let's give the, a good challenge to the people before we start any kind of ordinance or anything for it about towing and stuff on the vehicles. Some, some is state law, so we understand that, but want to give a heads up to people that we need their help, and we'll see how that goes, and that they understand what a hindrance it is when you're trying to do a plow, especially in, or, or work a plow on the streets in Rapid Valley with the streets being that small with all the vehicles on there, so.
You got it.
I appreciate any help you could give us, Cody.
Absolutely.
Any other? I haven't got any feedback on the move, other than that, I know all the department heads, everybody was happy about how the movers handled it. Shout out to Mr. Purcell's for handling that, and the moving company, do you know, remember the name of them?
The moving guys.
The move, the moving guys did a superb job, so shout out to them. So hopefully everything's going smooth, you know? Obviously, we have, you know, road bumps to work out, but we appreciate it, Cody, and I know we're still working, moving forward to change our website to make it more interactive and give us, get people more information, be as transparent as possible, and we appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just a comment, Cody, thanks for, you know, you do a great job of putting county information out there and making it accurate and digestible, so, thanks.
Thank you. You're free to go, sir. We're going to take a break.
We'll take 10 minutes.
Break.
10 minutes.
When we come back, we'll move into the Planning and Board of Adjustment hearing, so. We're all ready, gentlemen?
Yep, move to go into Board of Adjustment?
A motion to go into the Board of Adjustments. And a second to go into the Board of Adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, Planning and Board Adjustment Hearing. So I will start with Ms. Brittany, you have the floor.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Hand, Planning Director. This item is a variance, COVA 25-0018. It's to reduce the setback to a section line right of way. The applicants are Alan and Missy Shrimp. The property is located off of Silver Spur Estates, but the actual location of the section line is off of Peregrine Point Lane. When we look at variances, we take a two-pronged approach, and the prongs are up on the screen for view. The staff did find that this lot has particular sighting and topographical challenges that would warrant a variance to the setback. There is a major drainage adjustment on this property. Let's see, through the rear of the property here, and they are looking to site a 40-by-80 shop building off of, and taking access off of Peregrine Point. They are looking to construct a retaining wall as well for this structure. They can't take access to put the structure near the home. Let's see, if you look at the topographical map here, there's significant topographical changes for this property. This little black box right here is the approximate location for that shop building. So staff is recommending approval of this variance due to the topographical inciting constraints on this property, and staff is recommending it with six conditions.
I'll move approval with six conditions.
And I have some speaker request forms on this item, so.
Is there a second?
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, so, but I do have some speaker request forms on 14A. So is Michael Milkie, are you in here, Michael? Do you want to come forward and just state your name for the record, and then, and you can, we'll give you three minutes on the floor here to address your concern.
My name's Michael Milkie. I reside at 8140 Stirrup Court in Rapid City. I'm opposed to the setback and the access to Peregrine Point Road. I own approximately 350 feet of that road, to the center of the road in which I pay taxes on. With, I was also former vice president of Stirrup Court or Silver Spur Estates Homeowners Association, and was made aware when I bought my property that there would be no entrances off Peregrine Point Road for the people that built in Stirrup Court. The original developers of Stirrup Court, Gary and Donna Cluth, had evidently wanted access to that road for approaches to the properties that back up to that road. And when they had submitted plans for that, I guess the city was involved because the city's. city's three-mile boundary stops right there at that section line or road. And if any entrances were supposed to be built onto that road, they were going to require the developer to pave curb and gutter, streetlights, and sewer and water on that road in case the city would annex that in the future. It is a, basically a gravel dirt road. It creates a lot of dust for myself. The road was built as a private road originally. I believe it is still privately owned. The person or persons that own that road do not receive road district money for that road to maintain it. So they have been maintaining it at their own expense. My neighbor to the south who gave me permission to speak for, although I would just say I don't have a written permission slip, he also opposed the road. He owns 775 feet to the middle of that road. And I believe in dealing with residences that were built on Stirrup Court, as a vice president, we had to approve buildings that were being built and the county permitting for entrances to a property was one entrance per property.
If you could sum up, I got, we went over to three minutes a little bit, so I'll give you some time to sum up. Usually we have a clock up here, we're getting used to the new.
Okay.
Well, go ahead and sum it up.
But, so I oppose the access and the variance to that. Also, the shop is 200 square feet more than allowed for in the Stirrup Court HOA covenants and if it, and it cannot exceed 16 feet in height. I, I don't want somebody coming to me later on down the road saying that, look, we're having people access this road now, you have to pay for your 350 feet to be repaired or come to me because more traffic on the road now is causing disrepair on that road. I pay taxes on that 350 feet of road, I consider it a private road and I have no access onto that road.
Thank you, Michael. I'm going to go to Tim, Tim Pavick.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tim? We usually have a, a three-minute timer up here and I, so, yeah, it comes and goes.
On the screen.
I'm trying to show the map, but yeah.
Yeah, it comes and goes, so we'll give you three minutes. We'll, you know, if it goes over a little bit, we'll just deal with it. So, Tim, go ahead and give your name.
Okay, my name is Tim Pavick and I own 1,400 and some feet of half of that road opposite the individual that just spoke. And I was present at the hearings when this development was originally plotted. And my objection back then was the request for variance from the pavings, the gutter and so forth along that road. And of course, the developers may have made it economically unfeasible, I don't know, but they chose not to do that and they approved the development on the condition that there would be no access to Peregrine Point Road. And it's my understanding that Gary and Donna Cluth, the developers, the original owners of the property, signed an agreement saying that there would be no access to that road. So I would assume somewhere in somebody's files, there should be some documentation to that effect. And I echo some of the previous comments that, that of the dust, the traffic, the fact that it's only maintained by the two of us that use the road and that additional traffic was unwanted and, and that was the original objection and the reason that those restrictions were put on the original approval of that plat. So in my opinion, granting this variance would allow the access, which is contrary to the original agreements and the conditions placed upon the plating of that subdivision.
Thank you. I'll open it up to questions from the.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin, sir.
I've read this, but I don't quite understand the access issue. They're asking for a setback variance and that's what we're doing. I don't know where the access is coming into this.
If I may, Joe Miller, Pankton County Highway Superintendent, I might be able to clear up some of this. So when this came across our, our desk here for the routing from Brittany's office, Peregrine Point Place is actually on a section line. So as you all know, improved section lines fall under the jurisdiction of Pennington County to maintain. The reason that this one isn't on our maintained list is, is our map from Silver Spur Road District shows, I believe it's the first couple hundred feet of this being maintained by the Silver Spur, excuse me, Silver Spur Road District. That's why it's not showing up on our list as a maintained road by Pennington County is we are under the understanding that the Silver Spur Road District maintained that and I understand that that may not be the case now. Hearing from some of these guys, we need to get ahold of the road district to figure out if they're maintaining it, if they're not maintaining it, it actually falls on the jurisdiction of Pennington County. And that's why the access comes to us is because it is off a section line, which the county is responsible for. It is not a private road, it is a public access.
Right. So the bottom line, it's a section line, so it's a, it's a, there's, nobody can, nobody personally can stop somebody else from using a section line, so. Brittany, is that correct? I mean, make sure we're not speaking out of turn here. So whether there's a road district there or not is, is irrelevant to the fact that that's a section line?
Correct. It's my understanding that a section line right of way, in other instances where there's access off of a section line, we get the approval from county, the county highway department.
And it's not been vacated as a private road or a piece of property, so, correct?
No, and if it's under the purview of the road district, they would be the ones that issue the approach permits for this. But road district roads that levy taxes and are under, you know, that purview, my understanding is they become public roads. So there's not, they're not private.
So do we have a road district that exists here or not, Joe?
So that, it needs to be sorted out is what I was trying to say earlier, is our map that we keep, we maintain their maps for the road districts in the townships. And our map shows that the road district maintains, I believe it's the first 500 feet of this Peregrine Point Place. And this is actually beyond that, so then it turns back over to the county. So the access actually comes to our office. So that's, it needs to be sorted out who's actually maintaining this road because if the, the road district isn't, it falls on us.
Even if it was, the park that they're looking for, the access is, comes off.
Comes from us.
Prior to the road district, so.
Chair.
Yes.
Can I, can I say something?
Permission.
Number one, it's a setback of 43 feet. Number two, number on the, if you look at, that's number two on the conditions. Number three is that no portion of the retaining wall will be placed within the section line right of way. So that was the concern of the highway is not having. So are we talking about the road or the setback? Because I keep hearing about the road and Ross Connect is, Commissioner Ross Connect is right, it's about the setback and it's 43 feet.
So the conversation is about the setback variance, nothing to do with the road, is that clear?
Right. Says it right here.
So is that clear? I mean, you guys came forward, one of you want to come forward and explain this to you so at least when you leave here, you understand what the issue is here. What we're, what we're looking at is a variance for the setback and the setback of the retaining wall, is that correct?
The 80 by, 40 by 80 detached shop and retaining wall.
We're looking at a variance which is a typical setback, you know.
I understand the variance setback, but they also explained that due to the topical, topographical constraints on this piece of property, that access would have to go to Peregrine Point, which deals with the access piece of this property. And I can, as the former vice president of the HOA, the HOA is, deals with the road district money for Silver Spur Estates and we have never maintained that 500 feet of road or whatever it is. And we're not obligated to. That was part of the agreement signed by the Cluths. Also in the agreement signed by the Cluths, because Mr. Pavick's property was the original driveway, that road was offset and had the developer got approval for the plans for that, he would have had to move that section of driveway so that it didn't, so that it would line up with.
So I would say in all due respect to what your concerns are, we're dealing with the setback only. You can't stop somebody from running down that right of way on the, on the right of way and unless there's some, something else we don't know about. A right of way is made for that particular reason and the county's challenged with keeping these right of ways open. So if your concern is about coming off of that right of way, there, there's nothing that this commission can do in that regard. And concerning with your HOA, there's nothing that the commission can do in that regard in covenants, HOA, any of that type of stuff would have to be something between you and the people that are, are building the home. It would be more of a civil situation. So we're, we're going to focus on whether or not we're going to do a variance for the right of way. So I hope that makes sense to you and.
Well, it's for the setback, not right of way.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the setback to, to the right of way, right? The setback that, for the building. Thank you, Commissioner Roskin. So that's what we're going to be concerned with right now and anything else other than that, we don't have any control over, so.
Okay.
All right? Anything, any kind of deals that were made with the past or the developers or whatever is, is, is nothing that we have any concern about or can do anything about. It would be more of a, a civil action or trying to work something out with your neighbors.
Okay.
All right? Appreciate your time. I'll give you a minute if you want to come up and just, just because you spent all the time waiting for us and, and, but you understood what I said to him, right? So we're not going to repeat that again.
Yes, yes, I understood that. But how, how can you disregard conditions that were set and agreed upon for the approval of the development in the first place? So to say that the restrictions that allowed the original variance to not pave that were put in place and allowed, how can you ignore those restrictions now?
We're just, yeah, we're looking at just planning and zoning, we don't look at any other covenants, any of that type of stuff is not our business.
Who would look at?
I would say maybe you need to, I would first try to talk to your, Brittany, can you come forward and give him some, I would say talk to your neighbor, try to work it out first of all and then.
Brittany Hand, Planning Director, I believe that the concerns with the access off of Peregrine Point were, was the, during the original plating process for additional lots and that's why they went through the Stirrup Court. I believe additional plating to take access off of Peregrine Point was the concern without those upgrades and the waivers or the variances that the city granted. This is for an accessory structure, which in this zoning district is allowed. Normally, any of those concerns would be addressed during our building permit process. This would be allowed through our building permit process if it met the setbacks and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be here. They just can't meet the setbacks for this accessory structure because of the topographical constraints and the sighting and the location of that drainage adjustment. And because of the topography of that lot off of Stirrup Court, it goes down pretty significantly. But this is an accessory structure, it's something that's allowed in our zoning district. The only difference is, is that they just can't meet that 25-foot setback because of the topography.
Okay. So any of the road access was done at the city then, through the three mile?
For the plating, yes it was. And this is off a section line right of way, so Joe was correct, it would defer to his office for that access or that approach that would allow it. Our office would look at the fact that it does have legal access because it is a section line, so it is a public right of way for access to that accessory structure.
Does that make sense to you, sir?
I would, it, it does, but the logic of ignoring previous restrictions does not make sense to me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. The question I have is, the building's built, they, they can pull off access off the section line, but any road maintenance is the responsibility of that owner if they want to get to that curb cut, is that what I'm hearing? The road district.
Yep.
Does not encompass this area and they're not responsible. It falls on the property owners, I'm assuming.
The way we understand it, is that correct, Joe?
Any maintenance on that right of way, Joe, that's not in the road district, falls upon the responsibility of the landowners, is that correct?
Unfortunately, as I, as I stated earlier, that's necessarily true. Since it is a section line that is improved, that actually falls on our office. When we went through the resolution last year, wow, when Ferber, now Avid Four, looked into all of this stuff for us countywide, the reason this one was missed is because it was assumed that it was part of the road district. If that's not the case, since this is an improved section line, it falls on you all or the, us to maintain this or not maintain it and we need to either choose to maintain it or we can put up a no maintenance sign or a minimum maintenance sign, that's up to you all. So we, we made a practice here this last couple of years to look at our road resolution once a year, to add and subtract anything that the city's annex and stuff like this. And this will be one of those points that we take a look at and, and figure out, okay, is it our responsibility since it isn't in the road district? And if it is, that resolution will come back in front of you guys.
Yeah, so, okay.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yep, me and Roskin.
Okay, we have a motion from Hancock, second by Roskin. So to approve this, is that correct? So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion carries.
One no.
One no. We have four to one, did you catch that? Thank you. Gary, you're opposed, right?
Right.
Okay, Gary.
Chair.
Yes.
Item B and C is a continuance of variance, COVA 25-0019 till December 16th, as well as C variance, COVA 25-0020 to December 16th, that'd be my motion.
Okay. I'll second that motion, so a motion from Hancock, second by Wyfembach to move to continue this item, as expected.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So if we have people in the audience that came to testify on that.
Oh, okay, well.
I don't know if we do or not.
No, I don't have any speaker request forms or anything.
Sorry, Cody Sax senior player, there is someone on Zoom who would like to speak on the item.
Yup.
We can still continue it, but they can speak.
Okay, just so he knows, we have a motion on the floor to continue it, but I, I was told about you being on Zoom and I, I missed it, so I apologize.
B and C both continue.
B and C, so we'll let you talk. We'll give you roughly three minutes. Can you hear me?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Audio.
Am I on? I can't tell.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I want to say that I'm, we're opposed to this. I'm not sure, from what I've heard from my neighbors, that it's proposed to be like 50 feet from my neighbor's property, which is basically 50 feet from what would be Battle View Road if Battle View Road didn't end at Milo Lane. But anyway, I'm, just wanted to show my opposition to this. I don't think it's a, a good idea. He's, he's got a big old property there and he's putting it on the far, what would be the far end of it, closest to the houses, my neighbor's house especially. But anyway, I believe they've sent in their emails as their opposition too, so just, I just want to end it there, I just want to say that we're opposed to this. But I didn't know about the continuance, so.
Yeah, we, okay, I just want to clarify something. What are they trying to reduce the setback to? Is there a reason that they're 500 feet, right? How tall is that?
Yeah, so Cody Sax senior player, that was part of the continuance. Their site plan is, is a little confusing. They talked about it going to the center of the center line road or, or the setback to the center line road, not the actual property line. So the continuance was, was so they submitted a new site plan. So that's what we're actually looking for, some of that information.
So we don't even know right now how far.
Yeah, so if you, when you look at there, so this is their site plan that they submitted. Look, it says 102 feet from Tower Center to right of way. So it's either going to be 102 feet to the right of way or I, I can't remember, Battle View Road's actually been that right of way, has been actually taken out of that property. But we're also looking for the setbacks to the residences because it appears that those are within 500 feet too. But we're also looking for the setbacks to the residences because it appears that those are within 500 feet too. So that's why we continued it for two weeks was to get some of this information cleared up.
Okay, so I mean, I mean, if it's possible, I think, you know, they should meet their setbacks. But, so we don't have that, so we're going to continue it. Does that help you, sir? Understand that we're going to come back with this, okay.
I understand that you're continuing to the 16th, correct? And we should be able to object then also?
Yeah, we're, we're continuing it because we don't have the right numbers here. We don't have what the setbacks will be or what they're asking for, correct?
Correct, we're just looking for that confirmation and then the confirmation from the tower to the center of the house, to the houses, because that requires a setback too. And for my measurements, it doesn't look like they'll meet that. So it might require an additional variance on top of it. So that's all the stuff we're trying to clear up before that 16th meeting.
So any kind of number now would be pure speculation, right?
Correct, yeah.
Perfect, so, did you have anything more you wanted to add?
No, that'd be it, I'll, I'll just show up on the 16th.
Awesome, have a great day, sir.
You too, thanks.
So we have a motion?
Yeah, me and you.
Yeah, we have a motion from Haddock, seconded by Wyffenbach to continue this item. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. We will continue to the December 16th meeting. And we will move to item, that was, we're moving to item.
Move to come out of Board of Adjustment.
The motion, motion, okay.
Those are two separate items, so there need to be two separate motions. The continuance for B and the continuance for C.
We couldn't do it with, with saying COVA 25-0019, COVA 25-0020 to be continued to December 16th?
Yeah, Tyler's saying two separate motions.
So make a second motion for C.
Same thing, COVA 25-0020 to continue till December 16th.
And I'll second, so we got a second by Drews, first by Haddock. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have a motion from Haddock.
To come out of Board of Adjustment.
To come out of Board of Adjustments and I'll second that. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're moving into the planning consent agenda. Consent agenda is act upon by one motion and the vote of the board, items may be removed. From the consent agenda placed the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Does any citizens want to move anything, remove anything from this? Seeing none, how about the commission? Anybody want to remove anything? Seeing none, let's get a motion on the floor here for planning consent item number 15A.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Drews, seconded by Haddock. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Planning regular agenda, so 15A, Ms. Brittany, you have the floor.
Thank you, Brittany, for all your help.
Hand it off, hand it off.
He's moving along, isn't he?
Yes, sorry, what?
16A.
Sorry, I apologize. Cody Sack, senior planner, item 16A is vacation of plat COVP L 25-0002. It's to vacate an easement on the plat. The applicant landowner is Steven and Deborah Berg. Location of the property is 5795 South Side Drive. So what they're requesting is, when this property was platted, a 20-foot wide waterline easement was placed on the property. However, a waterline easement or a waterline was never built there. And through my research, this is the only lot in that subdivision that has an easement on, for a waterline on there. So I'm not entirely sure why it was there. But we talked with, an email was sent to the city of Rapid City. I didn't get a response from them to see if it was theirs. But Rapid Valley Sanitary District did confirm that no waterline has been built there and they're not opposed to it. So staff is recommending approval of vacation of plat COVP 25-0002 with a condition.
Unconditioned, so moved.
There we go. We have a motion from Haddock, seconded by Drews. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to item number B. Public hearing of Mr. Jason, sir, you have the floor.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thonason, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item 16B is Planned Unit Development Amendment 04-18. And that is to amend an existing planned unit development to allow commercial uses on Lot 1. The applicants are Scott and Jan Zanstra. Location of the property is across from Old McDonald's Farm and Rushmore Shadows Resort along Highway 16. This does involve five separate properties, all cumulatively, or 25.83 acres. Currently zoned, planned unit development, accesses off Pressata Place and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Essentially, what they're proposing to do with these commercial uses are, it looks like 17 vacation home rental cabins, pool, laundry facility and a wedding venue. You can see that on the site plan on the screen. This is the PUD in its entirety with all five lots. The other four lots that are remaining would be for rural residential uses. So I made a condition in there that it would abide by Section 207 of the zoning ordinance for rural residential uses. Request was sent out for an interdepartmental review. The addressing coordinator did have a comment that I did make a condition of approval. With that, staff does recommend approval of Planned Unit Development Amendment 04-18 as a proposal appears to be in harmony with existing and proposed land uses in the area on the Highway 16 corridor. That'll stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Have a motion on them?
I'll go ahead and move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Roskinex, seconded by Haddock.
24 conditions.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Item C, Mr. Jason? Oh, you guys keep switching up. How am I supposed to know?
Back and forth, back and forth.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll wait till you make a move next time.
Withdrawal one?
Yes.
Okay, move to approve the withdrawal of PU 98-01 per applicant's request.
I'll second that. We have a motion from Haddock, seconded by Wyffenbach. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Item D, request to refund penalty fees. Sharon, Sharon Meister, Sharon Meister, staff recommends, okay.
Good morning, Kelsey Roush, planner. The property owner Sharon Sharemeister is in the audience. If you have questions for her, she did make it to town. Would you like me to go over any of the?
If you just give us a brief summary?
Just a brief summary, okay. She had, she and her husband had submitted a building permit in 2020 for a new house and attached garage. Things happened, her husband did end up passing away. They did not build any of the house. The building permit then expired in August of 2022, without any of the house being completed. The only portion that they did do was pour concrete for the foundation. Then, two years later, she did come in, her installer came in to get a new septic permit because that permit had also expired. I believe she was in the office. I, I'm not, I wasn't part of this at this point. Staff did send her that, tell her that she would need a new building permit because her original one had expired. I'm not sure what happened since then, since October of 24. In, within the move, we did find some paperwork that was partially filled out for this property for a new building permit. I then sent her a penalty or a letter saying, hey, we, can you please come in and get a new building permit? You're in violation. She came in, got it done right away, she did pay the penalty fees. And now she is requesting to have those penalty fees returned to her, so.
How much is that?
The total penalty fee is $2,478.
And how much was the building permit?
The building permit itself for this year or the original?
Original one and then for this year. So she's got two building permits?
Yep, so the original one from 2020, she paid $842. For some reason, that permit did not include any of the decking. And there's also square footage above the garage that is finished that was not included in that permit. I don't know how that was missed, there was not, we didn't require as much plans then as we do now. So she should have paid around $1,300 in 2020, if those square footages would have been included.
How much she pay now?
This year, her permit was $2,478.
$2,000, how much?
$2,478.
$478?
And that's how much the penalty fee is as well.
This year's permit was just an extension of the last year?
No, because it expired.
Right, so she got a whole new building permit.
Whole new building permit.
The original building permit didn't do her any good, only to get the foundation in the ground, so. The circumstances are tough. And first of all, feel for her, her loss. Secondly, in my mind, she's paid plenty in building permits to build her house. I don't know that tagging on a penalty is going to be helpful in this case, so.
Make a motion that, however you say, she doesn't have to pay the penalty fee since she's already paid the building permit twice at this time.
I'll second that motion, so any more conversation among that?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So has the penalty fee been paid? Are we asking, looking at reimbursing it, is that what it is?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Drews, for that. We'll vote, so does everybody understand the vote? We're going to vote to refund her the penalty fee.
$2,478.
$2,478, did you get that, Kara? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, honey.
Okay, which one are we going to, 17?
Definitions of public ordinance amendment.
Which letter?
D, or, I'm sorry, E.
E.
E, sir.
Got two screens going up here and then, so I'm getting used to it, I love it really, it's great. Public hearing of ordinance amendment, so Ms. Brittany.
All right, item E is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA 25-17 for Pennington County to amend Section 103 definitions of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. There are several definitions that are not defined in our ordinance that we are looking to define. These terms come up on a regular basis through our building permit review process, through our CUP process. So we are looking at defining those. One other one is kennel. And that actually will coincide with the animal keeping regulations that you guys will see on the next agenda item. But staff would take any questions or anything that you would have on any of these definitions.
Any questions from the commission? I don't see any questions. We got a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
Move, a motion for discussion? We can discuss it without a motion, right?
I know, but you can discuss it after too, if they still have case of missum.
I mean, how do you vote on a motion to discuss?
No, motion with.
Oh, you're going to move to approve it?
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you.
With, if.
Motion by Haddock, seconded by Wyffenbach for discussion, let's talk about it now.
Anybody got to talk about it?
Does anybody have anything to say? Commissioner Durden moving towards his microphone, any, for sir.
I know there was a manure thing and some stuff that people were worried about.
So is this just on the definition?
Yes, sir.
Trying to pull it up.
Yes, just out of the definition, Section 103. These definitions will be added and then the definition of kennel will be amended.
Jordan, there's no way to shrink that page so it gets all on one?
On two pages, but I can do this.
Yeah, I mean, that way. Can you read that, Commissioner Durden?
Yeah, I can read it, on this one, I'm fine. It's the next one, I've got comments on.
Okay, so he's fine on this one, so any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to item F. Ms. Brittany?
Item F is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA 25-18 for Pennington County to amend Section 322 Special Animal Keeping Regulations of the zoning ordinance. There were some changes on setbacks, some definitions were clarified. The number of animal units per lot size, there were some updates and there was some clarification and adding of different animal types that weren't included in the previous one. So I guess staff will entertain any questions.
Commissioner Durden, you have the floor.
Yeah, so yeah, as you go through here on some of these changes, and again, can we get some of these redlined when they come forward?
Well, this one, it was like it was a complete rewrite. So the formatting had changed, most of it has changed. I can highlight the major points in the.
Let me, I'm just going to go through and cover what, what I see. And some of that, and I mentioned a comment to you, but in here it says presumption of maturity. And then you have it in the different sections of foul and going through. But anyway, it says automatically presuming animals are mature unless otherwise judged by the planning director. And so in some sections, you have that anything six months or older is mature. And then you have where, you know, the planning director will determine the maturity.
So that is actually in the current section of the ordinance that we're, and so that's all removed. So that is actually on page three. Page four is the start of the new proposed text and that was removed. So the maturity would be anything over six months of age. So there's no like presumption and there's no determination by our office on what that is.
All right.
So there is some clarification.
And then getting to your setback, and so we had this discussion. So for example, is this setback, it was 50 feet? For, let's just say a horse is out on an acre lot in the property line. And the way you would look at the pre, the ordinance as it is existing right now, then if you have a fence, a barbed wire fence supporting or separating two properties, the individual that has the horse, based on our ordinance, would have to build a secondary fence or enclosure 50 feet from that property line. Is that still the case?
No, it is not.
And what is that setback?
In the current ordinance, it's 25 feet. The enclosures, if it's a coop or something like that, that's a structure, it'd have to be 25 feet. If there are roaming animals there, it is not in there any longer. So it does not read that way any longer.
And does the setback vary, vary based on lot size?
No, so it's 25 feet. So if you look at the zoning districts in which this applies, those zoning district requirements, the setbacks are 25 feet, so it matches those. And just so the board is aware, this does not include agricultural properties. Agricultural properties are exempt from the animal keeping. And that is a statutory requirement. This does have to do with rural residential ranchet. Suburban and suburban residential one and two, they only allow chickens. There's no other animals that are allowed in those zoning districts.
And what's wrong with the rooster?
Roosters are not allowed in, outside of agricultural districts.
You missed the planning meeting on what roosters and chickens and everything were.
He knows the difference between a rooster and a hen.
And a chicken?
Yeah, he does.
What they do with the roosters and all that kind of stuff? If you have a boy one, they only want one rooster and they sell the rest?
You're not talking about agricultural, like, no, I mean.
No, this is just.
If Jerry wants a rooster, he can have a rooster.
No, it's just in here, I mean, again, and I kind of talked to Brittany about this months ago because I got, and it's actually in Commissioner Roskinex's district. But, you know, some of this I find very over restrictive and I find out it was written basically what was called by a citizen chicken committee. And so the basis of this ordinance was written by a bunch of people about chickens going over on somebody else's deck and taking a crap. And so we, you know, we got citizens put together and then they put this stuff in here. But I mean, it is very restrictive and I think overly restrictive on, specifically if somebody has an acre of ground. So for example, how many horses can you have on one acre of ground?
According to this, it is one, one per one.
That's too restrictive, in my mind, anyway. Because again, if you're going to have, let's say you're a married couple, you have a horse and you have, you know, you have an acre of ground and you've got a barn, you can put a barn on an acre of ground. And then we're saying that you can't have more than one horse on an acre of ground.
Can you have a barn on an acre? And how big a barn?
You can have as big a barn as you want, as long as you meet the setbacks.
Yeah.
A barn does that make?
And you, the stormwater requirements for lot coverage.
What's that?
You also have to meet the stormwater requirements for lot coverage.
Saying you're going to have a hell of a time trying to put a barn on an acre.
No, the point being is that it gets down to, and you're saying that the number of animals on a lot comes down to the mitigation aspect, getting back to, you know, does the horse manure create, you know, nuisance to a neighbor? And so as I look at this, and I know, because again, it gets back to an enforcement issue. And so if you have one neighbor complain about another neighbor having more than one animal, you know, they have two horses on their property, I don't think they should have two horses. The property is meticulously well-maintained. And then we're going to say that no, by ordinance, we're saying that you can only have one horse. The property is meticulously well-maintained, and then we're gonna say that no, by ordinance, we're saying that you can only have one horse, you know, on an acre of property, and I get that it's, you know, in the district as it's zoned, but, and then you get into it, so then, we have, under the nuisance ordinance, which is what I was pointing out before, that had some grammatical errors, not this one, so I'm on the one oh six, has got some issues on it. But then you go back to the nuisance ordinance in Rapid Valley, then we're saying that you could have, you know, how many, how many vehicles on a property? I know we're changing that proposed, but again, so you're talking a residential lot, and then we're going into a rural area, you know, with an acre of ground in this ranchet subdivision, and saying that you can only have, you know, one animal, and then it comes down to an enforcement issue, and in fact, I know that we're not enforcing it, so. I think this, I understand it came from a citizen committee and went through the process, but overall, I just think the ordinance itself is highly regulatory.
Chair.
Sir, yes, Commissioner Hancock, I was just thinking about what Jerry was saying, they're trying to figure out how to, go ahead.
Well, it's an acre, it's not ag, it's not ranchet, it's an acre. An acre land with two horses, or, that, that, there's a whole big difference. And just because it's meticulous today, doesn't mean the next person that owns it's meticulous, so you have a reason why you put it on an acre. Because it becomes a nuisance sometimes when you have two horses, or you have certain areas that can't take that kind of ag on those types of properties, so you have exceptions, I get it, but. Over regulatory, in one sense, depends on who you're talking to, on over regulatory on some of this. Are we talking, this one is overregulated, but the nuisance is not overregulated.
Right, what are you saying, I'm gonna intervene here because you missed part of what you said.
Why I'm saying that is because they put it on an acre for a reason, because they probably had a lot of nuisance calls, a lot of things came, come to pass, not because one thing happened, is because on an acre, there was probably a number of areas that had issues with two horses, or the ordinance where it is today. I trust the planning commission vetted some of these areas. Once in a while, okay, somebody turns you in, well, like anybody else, you have to go look. And if you go look, and if the property's meticulous, I get it, but what if it's not?
Then it becomes a nuisance.
Okay, no, so let's go down to, what if it's not, and so the question would be, so, one person, this is, goes back to my consistency as to how we enforce or do not enforce ordinances, so you can, you can put anything on paper, and you can do all of this, but you gotta have a process to go out and say, you're a non-compliance, I'm gonna do this. And if I were to go out in these areas right now, we have, I'm gonna ask you to take a guess, how many properties falling under this current regulation do you believe would be a non-compliance?
I don't know, all of our nuisance complaints are on complaint basis only.
Correct.
So unless we get complaints on them, we don't go out and look to see if people have animals, or if they're over the numbers, unless a neighbor complains.
And this goes back to the issue that the people that get subjected to a neighbor moving into an area and getting a complaint, and then they look around, and they go, go throughout this entire area, I'm not the only one, are we going to enforce it on everybody? And then the comment is, nope, only if we get a complaint, so it's inconsistent.
Well, if you'd like them to be proactive, we can do that. No, no, that's what we're saying. We're saying that, okay, so, in one sense, well, let's enforce the law, but we should also enforce the law by being proactive and going around, and making sure that by this law that we changed, make sure everybody's compliance with it. So then when we do the nuisance law, and we do that, we're gonna go, and we're gonna make everybody comply that we've had complaints on, or are we gonna do new complaints? Because if we do that, let's enforce the law.
Yeah.
So, that's not what we do. That's not what you do to your citizens, they don't do it to Rabbit City, you don't go around and be proactive.
So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hancock, hold on a second.
Yeah, it just goes back to, you know, it's just a comment that I have, and I'm not gonna get into individual cases, and I'm not gonna get in, it's a philosophy for me. If the government, if you over, if you, if the government over regulates, and you create ordinances, and you institute things, and you create these parameters, and you tell people you have to live by these guidelines, we've created an ordinance, yet we don't go out, and we don't do anything to follow up on that, then I question why we have the ordinances in the first place, because I believe the government typically over regulates too much, particularly when you don't go out, and you don't have an enforcement arm, but there's an expectation, but you don't follow through.
Right, I have, I have a complete agreements with what Commissioner Durd is saying, because you gotta look at it from the perspective of, if you, if you skinny this down to where it just provides a solution for, now we gotta go find a problem. That's exactly what's happening here.
Well, Chair, let's, let's talk about the other side.
Commissioner Hancock, I'm speaking, please.
Well, I was speaking, you guys all interrupted me, and I didn't finish, Mr. Wyfenbach.
Go ahead, I mean, you take precedence, so let's do it.
It's not precedence, it's because you guys did the same thing. So, same thing on what you're talking about. If you make it a rule and law, and you're not gonna enforce it, and they're gonna come up here, and you're gonna change it, that's why we have variances, that's why we have all kinds of stuff. That's why you have areas where you can change and make things so they work for people. In the other words, if you're mad about a nuisance law, and now you wanna pick on acre land with a couple horses, there's a difference. So, let's ask ourselves, are we making these rules for us, or are we overmaking rules and regulations? Then in the next sense, when you go in the nuisance law, it never was followed through, not because the planning commission didn't do their job, it's 'cause the commission didn't have the wherewithal to give them enough money to do their job, and have enough people in order to afford, or bring forward enough, how many people do you want out there doing code enforcement? So, give them more money for their code enforcement.
Commissioner Hancock, are we talking about this ordinance, or the one that's coming up?
Talking about both, 'cause that's what Mr. Durd is doing.
No, he's not, he's pointing out the fact that we're overregulating, and what we're causing is, we're causing.
And it's because of the nuisance.
We're trying to find a solution for a problem that doesn't exist, and when you skinny this down like this, is exactly what you said don't wanna happen, is what's causing this to happen.
If it didn't exist, they wouldn't have made the rule.
Here, let me explain, if you, hopefully I can explain it to you, so you understand from the perspective where he's coming from, or I'm coming from on this, the fact that you skinny this down to one horse, and then you got somebody who's got one horse, and it's a nuisance, so all of a sudden, he gets turned in for nuisance now, he's gonna say, okay, now you need to check everybody, because I know that guy has two horses, that guy has two horses. So, so we're overregulating, just like we did with the example earlier, when we said we shouldn't pass a law that we're not gonna enforce. And we're not gonna enforce this, I don't know.
So Brittany, why did you do these rules and regs, and why did you come up, and how did you come up with these rules and regs today? Or Jason, can either of you explain why you put this on here, 'cause they're beating it up, and if it's not going to be enforced, and if, if they believe that it's not going to work, let's take all the rules and regulations off here, and just let everybody do what they want.
Well, that's not the point, Commissioner Hancock, now you're over, you're going over the top, because we're talking about,
It's your opinion.
We're talking about regulation and overregulation, and I think Commissioner Durd and myself feel that some of this is overregulation, and it goes too far, and so what it's gonna do is cause more opportunity for more people, just that are abiding by the law, to be all of a sudden be out of, you know, if they have two horses on one acre, that's the top one here, or whatever, and they're taking care of it, then why is that a problem?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
This actually kinda happened in my district a few months ago, and we got it worked out. And I agree with you and Jerry, you know, I think just too much regulation is not enough enforcement. But going back to the one horse per acre, maybe it should be, you have as many horses you want on that acre, but when you create a public nuisance, that's when we're gonna step in.
That's exactly what he's trying to point out, is that whatever rule you make, you better be able to live by. And if you have it, or two, and it becomes a nuisance, then you go and you get them for being a nuisance. That way you don't have the problem of going, okay, now this guy knows one horse per acre, he's gonna go up and down the road looking for two horses on every acre, or everything that doesn't match.
There's more than two horses on this agenda, if you wanna look at all the areas that you have an issue with. And maybe, when you have these issues, maybe you should talk to the planning department, and bring some of this up before you just bring it up to the public, so they know kinda what you're thinking, and maybe work with them on these ordinances.
Is this the time we talk about this, or not, am I confused?
No, it is, and I did have a conversation with Brittany about this, because I was getting, I got a phone call, and it was in Roskinex's district. And then that perpetrated other phone calls coming in, and I did go in and visit with Brittany about this. And so when I bring these things up, and I say it's overregulatory, that's my belief, I believe these should be public discussions, I'm not looking to beat anybody up. She told me the premises of how this got here, and that's what this thing is kinda called, the chicken ordinance. So anyway, my bringing these things up in public, and that goes back to a discussion that I think a lot of the things that we talk about, obviously, that's why we have a hearing, it should be a public discussion, so.
Chair, so I'd like to answer that. So there is public hearings, and we always have public hearings, but there's a staff that works on this stuff that maybe you should meet with once in a while, and when they ask you to meet, and you don't have time, but you have time to come up.
Commissioner Hancock, hold on a second, we're not going down that road, we're not.
We are, 'cause we just said that we do.
No, we're not, I'm gonna hammer you down. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go down the road of beating up another commissioner because of his stop process during the public hearing.
That's not beating him up.
No, it is.
It's common sense that if you have an issue, you should talk to your staff, so they know.
Order.
Your order.
My order.
Yep, good for you.
Ron's order.
Good for you.
All right, let's, let's talk about the matter at hand here. Do we wanna have a public conversation about this? When we have private conversations, we, we all know well that that's not, you can't do that.
We don't have private, you do.
These are, these are property rights.
Yep.
Okay.
No one's having private conversations.
Chair, if I may, these numbers are in the existing ordinance right now, so the existing ordinance has these one per one. If we want to change or update the table, then that would be my recommendation, that we come back with better numbers, or, or, or get rid of the numbers, or something like that, but these numbers are already in the existing ordinance, so I just wanna clarify that.
Perfect.
This does make it a little less restrictive, as far as the fifty feet versus the twenty-five feet.
With the, with the, with the fencing and whatever you're talking about.
Correct, correct.
So now we're all back on track.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, and a previous commission, we had an ordinance enforcement officer that was actively enforcing the ordinances. A previous commission actually said, no, we do not want to do that.
And Ms. Brittany, we're not talking about that.
No, I know, and I just wanna know, want to be aware that that's how it got to the complaint basis only, that we don't go out and actively look for, so.
We'll have that conversation, and we'll get to the nuisance part.
I want you to be proactive.
All right, Commissioner Hancock, if you have something to say, you can ask for my permission to speak, because nobody can hear when you're talking. We have due respect here, that's all I'm asking for, just some respect, a little bit of respect.
Don't have people interrupt me then. Thank you.
You never had the floor when they were interrupted, we just kinda allowed a conversation, because it's only really the way we're gonna get anything accomplished that we all agree on, we can't, we have to have the conversation here.
You gotta let one finish, please.
Well, you didn't have the floor at the time, it was, no, anyway, I'm not gonna argue with you. So, that's the one thing I don't wanna have happen. So, we'll move with this, so what are you looking for here, just that change, and it's, it's not changing any of the others? If we wanna talk about some more of the restrictive stuff, we can, we can have that conversation at another meeting.
Correct, I would recommend that we continue this, and then we meet and discuss the numbers, so we can change them, 'cause right now, this is what they are in the existing ordinance to enforce. If those numbers are not palatable to this commission, and they wanna loosen up those numbers, or change the language in it, I think it would be in our purview to continue it, to have those discussions, to come back with some different.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Roskinex.
I think Jerry and I will both agree with that, because it's our districts that.
I was gonna say, it's probably more, yeah, in your guys' district, but. You want the floor, Commissioner Hancock, go ahead and say what you wanna say. Go ahead, you got the floor.
So when we have it at five people vote, not two, people keep saying it's their districts, we get the same phone calls as whether we're in your district or not, we still have to solve the same problem, so I keep hearing it's my district. They don't just call your district, they call all of ours. Number two, when you have something, you don't have private meetings. When you're meeting with your staff, and you're doing your job, just like we do with Jordan, just like we do anybody else, we all have those meetings, those aren't private meetings. Those are meetings to discuss this with the staff, that if you have disagreements, and this is happening in both your districts, we sit down with constituents, we sit down with our staff, those are not private meetings, we should have them in public always. But we should also have the, have the wherewithal to talk to the staff before we come up to a meeting, and see if we can change some of this, like we have before, many times, by having real discussions, not behind the scenes, backroom deal things, that's not what it's called. It's making a difference with this staff, or anything, when we send emails, or have meetings, to make this so it's a purview to everybody, and when we make those changes, because we've had enough complaints in our districts, that we want those changes, and that these guys are understanding, and they can make that difference and that solution for you. So that's what all I was asking. I don't have private meetings.
So do we have a motion on the floor for this item, or do you want, no motion?
Move to continue.
To December sixteen.
Have a motion to continue, you have a second?
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah.
I would prefer it to be the first meeting in January.
Okay.
I think that would give us more time to discuss and do some research.
Substitute motion, or, you wanna change your motion, Deb?
I'm gonna make, well, there is no second on that motion, I'm just gonna make a motion to continue until the second meeting of January.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the second weekend of January. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, move on to the next item, which is.
G.
F.
G.
Animal keeping regulations, no, G, public hearing ordinance amendment, penalty kind of amendment, one oh six, public, this is the other one that we have.
So item G is first reading in public hearing of ordinance amendment OA twenty-five dash one-nine for Pennington County, to amend ordinance number one oh six for public nuisance. And there was just a few changes in here that we had made, due to just reviewing some of the concerns about the inoperable vehicles, we looked in other places in our ordinance, so we changed that number from five, I believe, down to three, because in our ordinance, our current ordinance as it stands right now, four inoperable vehicles or more is actually considered a wrecking yard, and would require a conditional use permit. And then we did remove, under section five, the declared nuisances, the noxious weeds, with the discussion of the Natural Resources Director, that is under his purview. So we don't need it under the nuisance ordinance, because he takes care of those complaints and those concerns, and he has a board that does that. So anytime we get complaints about noxious weeds, we forward that onto him, and his office has been really great about taking care of those, and working with landowners on those. And then we did actually define sidewalk, because we do have a couple nuisances declared in here about shoveling sidewalks, and the repair of sidewalks, especially in the Rapid Valley area. So with that.
This is where, this is where it comes into, you know, you were talking about explaining how we got to the point we are with enforcement. And I think this is the big thing about, we've had conversations about enforcement when we put these things in place, so this would be the appropriate time to talk about enforcement of these issues, so I'll open up the floor to the.
I missed one point, I apologize, we actually added the procedure that we discussed at the last meeting, about the fourteen days, and then the hearing in front of the board, or the state's attorney's office. So that was discussed at the last meeting, so that was added to this as the procedure moving forward.
Because I think that, Ms. Hancock, do you have some things to say on this one?
So, Chair, this is where we met with the staff. People were invited, that didn't show up, but it's fine, that wanted to make it public. But bottom line is, we came up with some good solutions, we found nine twenty-nine dash one, that wasn't in there, that the city has that first mile jurisdiction, some other areas, that's why we meet with our staff, and so they have the understanding what we're thinking, what they're thinking, and maybe what the public has said in the past, and what the problem was in the, in the past as well. Having eleven years in the county, I had a lot of pass with the nuisance ordinance. And again, it's nice to bring an ordinance forward, the main thing is make sure that the constituents, no matter whose district it is, whether you have more or not, have the same understanding that we'd like to do it in a way that we get things cleaned up, but we also like to do our due diligence as a county, to give them the chance to clean it up. Give them two weeks, instead of just giving them thirty days. Two weeks would give them the chance to meet with this board, it also would have them a chance, two weeks, to clean it up. If they did not, then they have that thirty days, I thought that was a good solution from the staff. And again, I'll reiterate, the staff just can't come up here and change stuff, or look at things like that, and then just change it the next day, we can move it on, but it's also good communication with people that are working for us, to have that communication, what we're thinking ahead of time. Even if you don't wanna meet with them, at least give them emails and different things that can make that difference, and see where they're going, 'cause they come up with some really good. going, because they come up with some really good solutions, because they've been doing this longer than we have, and it's their job description. So I thank you for moving this forward, Brittany and Jason, and, and Dwayne, and coming up with some really good solutions, and I appreciate that.
We have other conversation on this?
Bye, Fimbach.
I, I have something to say on this, because someone's brought up, and that's important about, and you started in on it when I cut you off, about how it became, you know, basically it comes down to the commissioner's will, to, to enforce these things, or not enforce these things. Do you overregulate these things? Do you underregulate these things? But in the bottom line, there's an enforcement policy. Do we give you the tools to, you know, follow through with these things? You know, we get, we got 14 days, 14 days, and then it goes to state's attorney at that point. You know, then there has to be decisions made. Obviously, there's gonna have to be some sort of reserve set aside to abate these properties, unless we can get the ordinance. The reason I brought up tickets earlier was the fact that if we wrote them a ticket, it's something they have to pay, and we could have a civil action. If you do an abatement, the only option there is to lean their property, okay? So if we lean their property, then it's gonna, it's gonna hold taxpayer funds in this, on this lien for who knows how long, before these problems get resolved. So these are some things we have to work out in the end. I'm all for this of, of somewhat expediting, but actually enforcing it once we get to that position. Of, and what the commission has to have as the backbone to say, when these people come forward, and, and they have their story, that we say, okay, you know, we looked at your story, and, and we understand, but we've given you plenty of opportunity to fix this. Obviously, before I came last night, I had two phone calls, and I, I sent those messages to Ms. Brittany about some of the same properties. So it becomes, in Rapid Valley especially, there's, people are getting to have, some people, just enough that causes, wreaks havoc for everybody else in the area that, you know, they break the rules, and, and we haven't had the willpower from the council, this commission, to enforce those ordinances upon them. So if we're gonna make this ordinance, let's be, let's have the willpower to enforce them, at least while this commission's here, and going into the future, if we have a policy set up that makes sense. You know, if we're gonna enforce them, then we need money for Joe and Brittany to be able to go out and abate these properties, because I guarantee you, the one we have an issue with is gonna be about a $20,000 abatement to clean up the person's yard, because he brought in truckload after truckload after truckload, and he keeps bringing in truckloads, and just piling them up. His neighbor's trying to sell his house, can't sell his house. It's, it's a reality that we need to face. So that being said, if we pass this, let's, let's please have a process in place to, to, to support code enforcement and Joe's efforts to, to, um, um, enforce them. So, Brittany, does that make sense, or?
Yes.
Okay. So changing the will from one commission to another doesn't, I mean, it makes it very complicated for the taxpayers when they, you know, and then that's why we're talking about, you know, if we overregulate, then everybody's gonna be pointing their fingers at each other, going, well, that guy's got, you know, so, let's look at the real regulations of what makes sense here, and what nuisances really are, and what is our process to, to, you know, we're gonna load up the, the state's attorney's office with some of these, these, they have to actually do all the legal work to enforce the abatement, is that correct? I mean, to enforce the lien, once we abate.
Correct. Well, this board, I believe, does have some authority for the abatement process.
Okay.
So that is in statute.
It's two different ways.
Yeah, there's two different ways. It can either go through court, or it can go through this board.
Okay, so are you satisfied? I mean, I think we should lay it on the board versus the court. We can't, we can't even get criminals through the court right now, so we have law, backlog of that, so...
So in the past, we have had one that went to court through, through an abatement process, and that was, actually, the board was more comfortable with the court, because it was somewhat of an invasive abatement. So that was something that a previous board was more comfortable with doing that process.
Because of the magnitude of the dollar wise?
Well, just the invasiveness of the abatement.
Oh, okay.
So, that was one...
They had to do some cleanup inside the house or behind the house, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Does this make sense to you, Commissioner Hattcock, what we're, what I'm trying to make sure we have a process in place? Commissioner Dur, I mean, uh...
You're good.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that, because I understand these nuisances. I know dealing from the city, and then it's like, one board, you're, one board's on, one board's off, but the reality is, we've gotten out of control. I mean, it's, we have to figure out how we want to handle the process, and do we, how do we give Ms. Brittany the tools, and Mr. Joe the tools to, to, to do this? If we're gonna mandate them to do this, then we need to give you guys the tools to do it, so, uh, I like the process to just, I mean, otherwise, we're spinning our wheels, you know. So, any more comments on this item, or?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hattcock.
So the bottom line is, and this is what I'll keep saying, with nuisances, number one, you have to have the money to do it. These aren't gonna be cheap, and they're pretty big nuisances, the ones that have been on the books. And that's why the state's attorney was trying to work with them, and trying to get them cleaned up a little bit at a time, even if we could get something out of them before. As you know, from a, doing a lien on someone's property, that wherewithal, if you haven't looked from the city, all the way to the county, since I've been here, hasn't happened. Not very often. So, we can say rules and regulations, we can say follow through on rules and regulations. You can be proactive, or you can be reactive on some of this stuff, and you can, you can clean up Rapid City really quick, you can clean up Pennington County really quick if you did that. But if you notice from Rapid City, they aren't any faster than this county, from what I've seen, and what I've experienced as a city councilperson. So, easier said than done, that their area needs to be cleaned up, and you need to do this, this, and this. When they come to you, or you turn your neighbor in, or you start these kind of issues, nuisances, or costing anybody any kind of money, be ready for that. That's all I gotta ask, because it's coming. And if we do this to people, you will have people coming up here that are, are, they don't have a lot of money, they're veterans, they're elderly, they will be homeless after that. Those will all be in the newspaper, and that's usually what makes politicians in the long run not follow through. It also, we all have hearts, so we don't want to do that to, to some of these people. We can't even sometimes, as you see, charge you for a building permit, because we had a rule on the book, but we can't, because there's circumstances. So, how many times is that gonna come through? It will. How many times do you want to lean people and take their properties? That's why probably, I'm gonna guess, it hasn't followed through through the city or the county. Those are the reasons. We can put it on the books, like we just said on the last one, and that's what I meant by that. You can put it on the books all day, but the follow through has to be from this commission in the long run. It's not gonna be your staff, they just need your help. Thank you.
And so, Commissioner Hattcock, maybe somewhere in the process, we could, to take the, take the burden off of, off of that person, when we get one of these bigger ones, and they could bring it in front of the board, before we abate it, and then we know we're not gonna abate it, and then charge all the taxpayers for it, and then not have the backbone to follow through. Okay, so, but that would be another piece of this, is that correct?
Mr. Chair.
Sure, Commissioner Dur.
Yeah, so it goes, so what we're learning from these, you know, ordinance revisions, and the stuff coming forward, and from, you know, correspondence with our state's attorney's office, state law already allowed this stuff to happen irrespective of our ordinances. And so, this goes back to a discussion we had, that I did have with staff. So I talked to staff quite a bit, and it goes back, I'm just gonna pick the one up on Kim Street. So that property has been, you know, on our watch list for four years, almost five years, coming close to five years this February. And so, when you look at a property like that, and that was my question, you know, has this ever been brought in front of the commission? And the answer was no, and that's part of this discussion, that some of those issues like that, even though it's sitting in the state's attorney's office, needs to be brought in front of the commission, and give the board the opportunity. And so, I think your spending authority is $1,000?
Yes.
Good. And so you can't go in with much and mitigate on these properties. And so, the point being is, many of these things that have been sitting out there for years, need, you know, now need to be brought in front of the commission, so we can have these conversations and talk about what we can do to support the staff, and how that, you know, we think maybe the best way to move forward is to mitigate some of these things. And what I'm gonna classify as some of the easy kills does not require, you know, in front of the board, and goes back to the conversation we had earlier. When you have multiple vehicles in Rapid Valley, and I'm not talking about vehicles that have been sitting there, you know, for 24 hours, and if you're gonna go chalk a tire and go, oh, that hasn't moved, we have construction equipment, trailers, junked vehicles, tarp vehicles, sitting in the county right away, which is impeding, you know, highway department's ability to go out and mitigate highway projects and snow removal, and it's a hazard to the people living out there that are continually complaining. And so, and again, then, you know, it goes back to what we talked about before, about, you know, educating the public and talking about what we're going to do, and how we move forward. But I think that, as we go through some of these things, and we have, you know, these nuisances that have been sitting there, then bring them in front of the commission, and then let's talk about what is the best path, best path forward to get those mitigated.
All right. So if we, if we pass this, this makes the revisions, I think what your point is going to is, we need to, instead of going to state's attorney's office for authority, just come to us and give her authority. That way, we can know what it's gonna cost us.
We have that two-path option, but basically have a discussion and say, we've been working this, we've done all this, we can't mitigate, you know, we followed everything, we've done what we can, and, you know, how would you like us to proceed?
Yeah, that way the monkey's not on her back, she, her spending authority is only $1,000 bucks, and then we're committed to, can't come back to her and say, why'd you do that? I get it. We don't, I mean, that's, that's a tough situation to put the planning director in. I mean, it's tough enough having that under the planning director itself, having, I mean, it really, to me, it's never made sense for that. It should be some different area, and I don't know exactly where it is, but so, how do you, how does the commission want to move forward on this then, I guess? I think if you move forward on this, and then when we, we need to have a process in place that, that, that gives her the authority to bring it back to us, so we can make those decisions on, especially the ones that have been hanging out there for a while. We need to, if we can address those right away. Commissioner Hattcock?
That's the 14-day. That's why we added it.
Okay.
It was the 14-days, so they'd have two weeks to look at it.
Okay.
And the constituent could say, okay, I'm gonna clean this up. If they do not clean it up, if I'm correct, Jason and Brittany, then they're in violation, or they can come to us, I'm sorry. If they don't clean it up, they can come to us in that 14-day set of hearing to come see us, and then figure out from there if we're doing a 30-day, or we're making them clean it up, or we're leaning, or whatever we're doing next. Am I correct?
That is correct. It would allow them to actually, if they think that our ordinance officer is in, or if they're in conflict with his determination, they can come to the board and challenge whatever his opinion is on the nuisance. Or they could, you know, work a timeline out with the board as to clean up, and what that cleanup is. One of the issues, you know, too, that we had discussed at the last meeting, is that it's difficult for us to determine what is valuable or not valuable to someone, and, and to take off. So I think having that hearing with the property owner here, so those types of things can be determined about what needs to go, and what doesn't need to go, and when, would be super helpful for our department, and it isn't putting that discretion in an ordinance officers.
Right.
It's also giving them a chance to talk to a board that is going to enforce it in the long run. It's not gonna be the planning department that makes them clean it up, or makes that move forward to a lien. That 14-days is, is plenty for people to either clean up, or make arrangements to clean up, and set a certain time to get that done. That's why that 14-days, the city does seven, and then they add seven more to go see the planning director, or something like that, and then they move forward to the board. So, we figured 14 was a good idea.
14's more reasonable, I can tell you. In that way, they can at least get ahold of you in that 14-days. Because of our timing, it might be hard for them to get here, but if they make an appointment with you, for 14-days to come here, we at least know that that's happening, and then that we can be the judge, jury, and executioner at that time, I guess, and...
We could move it forward, just like the planning commission said, I'll move this forward, but the main thing is make sure you have enough code enforcement that you're talking about, and you have the money, and the wherewithal at that time as well, once we move this forward as well.
Right, and we have a procedure, we'll, we'll get through it. So, do everybody understand that, I guess, or have any...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve OA 25-19.
I have a motion from Dur, and a second by Hattcock. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Move on to, okay. Recommend motion, okay. Items from the commission office, this is a library contract update, and so, I don't know how we want to handle that, Jordan, I guess, and maybe, I know there's been several contacts with the library since, once we got past the chaotic part of it, and, you know, I myself, and Ron Roskinek, Michael with the library, Dan Ainsley, the head of the library lady, they made a proposal to us at that point in time. Do you have that, Jordan, a copy of that? You could present to all the commissioners, or maybe it's on the agenda somewhere.
It's not on the agenda yet. All I was going to do was give an update on the meetings that we've had with all the different libraries.
Was that, that's good for everybody?
And so if, if I could start there, and, yeah, then we can...
Okay, we'll do that, because we're not really prepared to, but I do want to make that part of the...
Sure.
I want, I want people to see that, because there's misnomers out there of how this all transpired, and it's unfortunate, because it's, it's, uh, it's led to a lot of ill will. I mean, this commission in particular has spent a lot of time working with the city on a whole global, global spectrum, which other people are not privy to. We've also spent a lot of time going through, as people witnessed today, going through every contract, everything. We were, we went through every dollar on the budget, pretty much. We're still not quite done with that. We're approaching those dollar amounts on the budget. We're looking at all our ordinances. We're doing a lot of housekeeping that's taking place, and in the interim, part of this library contract came up with the RAPSCI library and the other libraries, and so, it started the conversation, and then it, it, the conversation got twisted up somewhere, and it, and it was a, a lot of information that wasn't, I don't know where it came from, a lot of it wasn't real. And so we, we've had meetings since then, we've been able to have meetings, and I guess that's what you're gonna update us on, so, everybody okay with we stick into the meeting updates?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
For now. Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, Jordan will give you an update, and, being that I've met with three libraries, I wanna provide an update as well.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, because if, yeah, if you want to do some, I don't care whatever you guys want to talk about.
I'll let Jordan start off.
Okay, perfect.
Excellent. And I, I will, jumping off of what you just said, Commissioner Wifenbach, we've had really productive meetings with the libraries. These have not been contentious. It's been very productive. Everyone's very understanding of the county's position. There's been a lot of misinformation out there, and it's taken a little bit of time, even to combat that with each of the libraries, but everyone has come to, I believe, a pretty good understanding of where the county's position was meant to be, and maybe it was a lack of communication, maybe it was a lack of understanding. I will take my responsibility for part of that, just saying that I, maybe I could have talked to them a little bit more, but I'm gonna read from some of my rough notes here. I, I did not have enough time to post these to the agenda, unfortunately, so bear with me. This should be just a quick recapping of the meetings that we've had with the individual libraries. So our initial meetings with those libraries and the members of the board, some had multiple members of the board of trustees, some had very few, but it was fine. We completed all of them as of the meeting with Rapid City Public Library yesterday, and as a whole, there were no deal breakers with that draft contract language that I had sent. There were concerns, and that's something that I'd like to bring to the board, so that we can talk about what their concerns were, but there were no substantive issues with the existing language within these contracts. So I do believe we can move forward presenting these, if the board is comfortable with it, presenting these to the board of trustees of each of these individual libraries to sign. And the one thing we are waiting on is the city attorneys for the Rapid City library, because they have not been able to review the contract language as of yet, so that is one thing that we will be waiting on. But I'll talk about, one of the most notable issues that we found was moving to an annual term, because that is what I proposed for the county's benefit. It had been a perpetually renewing contract since 2016, and my proposal is, let's do it on an annual basis, with an agreement to extend that every year, just like we do with the Dakota Plains Legal Services. And so for our indigent legal services, that's what we do. We have a contract with them, an annual contract, that started in 2000 with Dakota Plains, and then every year, we have a document that we agree to extend that contract, and here's the amount we're going to pay you. And so the way I see that working for the libraries moving forward, is throughout this budget process, we start in basically late April, early May, and we communicate with the libraries and say, this is what we know you're currently funded, and this is what CPI we've been told can be. Unfortunately, at that point, we can't... Unfortunately, at that point, we can't give them what growth could potentially be, because we don't get that until a little bit later in the year, but we can also give them growth in the language of the contract, but we won't know that until we get closer to the provisional, which is in July. So we're gonna reach out to them and let them know, as we have in years past, here's what you had received last year, here's what the potential for an increase would be based on just the library levy, and that is something that we would put into that agreement that extends the contract. We would say, this is the amount, once it's approved in the budget, this is the amount that we are willing to pay, or able, I should say, able to pay these libraries as a county. And so, as we look at the other issues that they had, some of the remote libraries had asked for the county, because they're so low-staffed, they'd asked us to provide further guidance or maybe even an actual form that they could submit that requests that same data that Rapid City Public Library presents quarterly, and all of them, most of them do present it to us quarterly of the usage statistics. And so that would be users by, are they within the city, within the county, and out of county? And then what is the circulation? What is the circulation by patron? What is the circulation by patron, by type? And so all those things are things that we had requested in the 2016 contract to be given to the county quarterly. I don't believe we need to do quarterly reports if we have an annual contract. I think we review this at the end of each year and say, is this effective for the county? Is this effective for the libraries? And so I think timed with their annual report that they usually file late February, early, early March, they can give us just an annual recap of all of those statistics, so we can say, this is how many county residents are being serviced by this library, and appropriate, you know, whether or not the proportional amounts that each of these libraries are getting, and say, okay, this, this feels like we're paying what we should be paying for the usage and for what the county thinks these residents should be provided. The next question was, and this is a question for the board specifically, in all of our contracts in 2016, and I did not change that for this new draft, we have a non-voting board member on the Board of Trustees of each of the libraries, and that does not have to be a commissioner, that can be anyone that the county appoints as the representative for county residents to each of these library boards. Per statute, we have the ability, if the library agrees in the contract, to have a voting member. Is that something that the board is willing to pursue would be the biggest question? Because Rapid City seemed very amenable to the fact that, well, if we have someone on the board, wouldn't it make sense for a little bit more buy-in that the county have a voting seat? Now, the issue is, is the statute reads that we are, and if, if they agree to it, it doesn't matter, but the statute reads that it is proportional to the amount of funding that we give, and if we're saying there's a $4.2 million budget for Rapid City Public Library, and the county pays basically $81,000, which is what we have currently approved in our budget, that's 2%. And so, do we get 2% of a board seat? I, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a voting member unless the funding is proportional to the amount of, say, we would have then in the direction of the library. And so that is, that is up for the board to decide whether or not they're interested or not in pursuing that. If you are, I can return to each of the individual libraries, because most of them seemed amenable to having a voting member. They all asked, kind of like, well, we'd love to have someone show up for those remote ones, and then with Rapid City, it's like, I always wondered why it's not voting. And I believe from all of my research that I had received from my predecessor, Holly, is that it seemed like there was some contention back in the early 2000s between the city and county, and the county said, we don't need a voting seat then. Well, we're fine, just you guys do what you want to do, we'll give you the money, just so long as we can go to the meeting, so long as we can be a member on the board, even if we're non-voting. And so the last thing I will say is that communication is the one thing that all of the libraries want us to increase, and that is absolutely my intention. Our office is going to increase the level of communication at every step of our budget process to make sure that if we sign this contract as it is presented today, and if we sign it on the 16th, I'm not asking you to sign it today, if we sign this, that we are making sure that both the libraries and the county are very clear in where we're at in each of our budget process. Is the library saying, we need more money for this reason? That should be communicated to the board as early as possible, and is the board saying, I don't know that the taxpayers are gonna be able to foot the bill for all of this, we need to communicate that back to the libraries as quickly as possible. And so that is my biggest goal in 2026 moving forward, is ensuring that those lines of communication are open and transparent. And that's all I've got for my little notes that I took here, and I'll let, Commissioner...
Commissioner Roskinek wanted to chime in on some of...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Jordan, and thank you. Jordan and I met with the Keystone and Hill City libraries, and, yeah, they didn't really, you know, have any concerns, you know, I mean, and we gave them plenty of time to reach out if they do have any questions, but the one concern that Hill City had was, wasn't really Hill City, it was Rapid City. They were concerned with what's gonna happen to Rapid City, because Rapid City Library aligns itself with 13 other libraries, and Keystone and Hill City are part of those libraries, and they work together, sharing information, sharing books, and if Rapid City, the budget is cut enough, there's a possibility that they'll quit this collaborative agreement with these libraries, and that could really impact their services. So I just want to point that out. I think what we're trying to do right now is relative, relative to the Rapid City Library, is trying to figure out what services do Tannen County residents that live outside of municipalities receive from the Rapid City Library, and at what cost is that to us? I got a email yesterday from the auditor, and it says, the IT department is looking into the database to determine how many parcels pay the library levy. Because no report like that is available, the easiest answer is, who does not pay the levy? Which is the following: City of Box Elder, Townham Hermosa, City of Hill City, Town of Keystone, Rural New Underwoods, City of New Underwood, City of Quinn, City of Rapid City, and Rural Rapid City. All other, all other areas outside these municipalities pay the library levy. So I'm asking Jordan and his team to give me the population numbers of each one of these communities, so that we can try to make a determination just how many county residents or parcels are involved with this. And then Ron and I did meet with the mayor of Rapid City and, and the director of the Hill City Library, and we did make some progress. I don't know if we're ever gonna get an answer that's gonna make everybody happy. I don't think that's ever gonna happen, but at least we're making the efforts. And, and in the past, I've learned a lot about libraries, I would say that there's been definitely a lack of communication between the commission and these libraries, and maybe that's kind of where we're at today. That's my two cents worth, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
Just one, one area, we met with Rapid City, and then he said there would be no diminishing of, if I'm correct, Jordan, of services to the other libraries. There was a possibility, at one time, I think they were, when they were a little bit madder at us, but at this point, they were not gonna do anything like that. They worked well with them, and they would not, there wouldn't be a possibility of anything diminishing for the other libraries from Rapid City Library.
If I could jump in, just as a point of clarification for the public record, that what you're talking about, Commissioner Roskinek, is the Black Hills Consortium of libraries, and so there are 13 libraries that pay into that basically, and they all participate, and they have interlibrary loan services, they have a courier who runs books back and forth, and that is the one thing that Hill City did express, and Keystone for a little bit expressed some concerns, that if Rapid City was reducing funding, would they pull out of that consortium? And through our conversations, Commissioner Hancock and I, yesterday with the libraries, it seemed like that wasn't necessarily on the table. It was one of their concerns early on, that they did communicate publicly, that maybe they might have to. And so you're, you're both correct with, with that, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
So Chair.
Yes.
With the negotiations yesterday, I think me and Jordan did well with the, with the county. There was Leah Braun there, there was Terry, the library director, there was Ms. Ainsley and me and Jordan, and the bottom line was, is if we were gonna do the funding, which I said I was one of five, and that the chair was in agreement, and I thought, based on when you had negotiations or talked with Roskinek and Commissioner Weifenbach at that time, that they were in agreement with putting back the, the reserves. So with that being said, I didn't know for sure, because we didn't take a vote, that was just conversations or negotiations. It wasn't a plus, but they didn't seem that that was such a bad thing to do, they just wanted to make sure that they could move forward, and by January, hopefully signing the contract, and if we could do that today, let's be up straight, when they told us if we could talk about it today, that would help them going forward. They also would know on the services that, what, where they were moving forward with some of that as well. And for me, I thought, even back when we did the 81, I asked Jordan if we had reserves right away, and he had said, and he had, did a guesstimate, which right now, we learned it's 170, but could go up to 197, that we also discussed because of our budget, because where we were at with our budget, that the property tax owners were more into what we were doing with our money and how we were spending our money, and it was very important, also from my emails, that I've heard from many people, that the property taxes, they loved the library, but they also believed that our property tax at 117 or 115,000 was more important than their library card. Most of the people that I had talked to, and that's why I said, we have got emails from a lot of the city folk online, and not a lot of county, and that they were more concerned about their property taxes and what we're spending our money on that way. So I had told them and reiterated that to them, and they had a total understanding that we do not get sales tax, and they understood that our budget needed to be cut to a certain extent, and I really appreciated that they were listening. And Ms. Terry was actually very nice about it with us as well, and now understands, we were not trying to be facetious towards the library and say we didn't like libraries. We were trying to tell you that the last few years that I've been in here, and I had told them the last, at least four years, that we needed to do something different, because we had people coming up every meeting about property taxes and things, how we were spending our money. So the number one thing was property taxes, and I thought that that meeting went well, and they had more of an understanding why we ended up where we're at today, and why we were thinking about doing the 278 would be the total instead of doing the 523 at that time. And then with negotiations going and moving forward in 26 also, so we could figure out the real numbers with Box Elder and other things. If I miss anything, Jordan, you tell me. And that those real numbers based on parcels and things that we were moving forward with, we could have real numbers in 26 to move forward with our budget with them, with an understanding, of a real understanding of where we were. If we did a vote, which I asked a couple of people in the community, and also asked Commissioner Weifenbach, if we could move forward with a vote, we haven't had a vote since 2025. They weren't opposed to that, they said they weren't gonna, 26, 26.
We haven't had a vote since 2000.
2000, for 25 years, sorry. Thank you, Jordan. And we talked about that, Jordan, and Jordan reiterated that we wouldn't have it till the general election, but in the budget process, we should probably be around knowing the numbers and the things that we needed to move forward to put out there to constituents, and they, they said they weren't gonna, well, a couple of them said they, they weren't gonna push the, you know, that's not what city does for election. Rod Pettigrew is one of 10, and he thought that was a good idea as well. That way, we could see the real numbers, see if we're moving forward in the right direction for our constituents. So to me, we had a really good meeting, they had an understanding, more of a full understanding of what was happening, and I think everybody in that meeting did very well. There was no argument of anything, it was just pretty much discussions of why we got to where we are today and, and why the county is where we're at today as well. So, thank you, Jordan, for, for going with and them for being so understanding and understanding our point. Mr. Ainsley knew the numbers, he knew some of the stuff of what we're talking about and why we got, because of no sales tax. He also offered up some areas that maybe might, he had talked to Mr. Weifenbach about, about the alcohol, doing taxing on that, some other stuff. So they were, to me, they were very understanding why we were at where we're at. It wasn't facetious towards them, it was trying to figure out our budget, because we don't get the money that the city gets. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinek.
You know, I got a lot of emails, but, you know, and the taxpayers, we talk about the taxpayers, the taxpayers, that when this went to public vote, the taxpayers, roughly 85% of them that were involved, said, we don't mind paying those extra taxes, we want to keep services as is at the Rapid City Library. And when I make a decision, whether today or the next meeting, it's gonna be based on what I feel...
Mr. Roskinek, I'm gonna give you a little bit more information before you go too far, because part of the problem is exactly what you said. In 2000, the vote was made, but due, due to the infinite wisdom of the state, they allowed people to opt out, and the problem is, the people that are, are paying it are about this much, but the people that are receiving it are this much. So we have like a sheet, like somebody took a shotgun, that's what this whole thing is, and they've got all these holes in it. And so people gotta clearly understand that the people that are paying aren't necessarily the ones that are using it, because Box Elder opted out, and all these other little communities opted out. All these little communities and municipalities of Hill City, well, all them opted out. So you got a, like, a few people paying, and you got all these people using, and so part of the problem is, is what we're trying, we're trying to get through to the library is, we need to understand, we need to do a reset on how we, how we handle this. That's why Commissioner Hancock brought back the, the, looking at the vote. You know, Rapid Valley's grown to 57703. Rapid City has annexed them a lot, a lot of those, those houses out there. We do not know specifically who's, who's paying, who's not paying, so the reality is, it could be a bigger number, it could be a little number. We don't really know, because we don't have the information, but I know one thing, there's a lot of people out there that are paying for a service or not paying for a service that they have the ability to get. Because the one email I did get that, that was very constructed very, very nicely and made sense was the lady from Elsworth Air Force Base, and she said, you know, I'm an active-duty military person, I didn't come to Rapid City because I wanted to come here, I came here to serve my country. I said, but I can't get a library card. I said, that's not on me, that's on Box Elder. So we have also entered into, Commissioner Hancock, and this is a whole big thing that goes, I'm gonna take the time now to explain, because...
Yes, go ahead. Before I forget, Ron, when they took the vote in 2020, they let people that actually weren't, 2000, why I got 2020 in the brain, 2000, they let people that had no effect on the levy, meaning that, go ahead, Jordan.
We're, we're not 100% sure. I spoke with the auditor, and we don't know whether or not they voted appropriately back then. They may have included some people in municipalities that did have a library service. We're not sure. So I don't, don't stand by that, but there is a question as to whether or not those numbers are accurate, so...
And how they voted, and who voted.
Yes, I'll be working with the auditor to clear all of that up.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll kind of start from the beginning, and basically, since I took over in this position as a commission, and one of the opportunities was to make the county whole and make it operate efficiently and effectively, it's come to our attention that there's a lot of holes in the whole operation, and one of them is contracts and stuff like that. So they talk about the county, the library contact, one of the reasons that it had to be broken was because that was the way it was written. It was written that we had to break it 60 days prior to the end of the commitment to be able to renegotiate the contract, so that, and we were under the gun for that. Alena and I had a conversation with Dan Ainsley, Jason Solomon, the mayor, and the head librarian, and I think there was Ron Roskinek was with me, and it was all about the whole conversation that, since I've been here, that we've been having, even before I got here, about how the commission and the city interact and intertwine all these different things, okay? And one of the things that came up in the conversation was, and I'll, I'll segue into why this makes sense, but the tax, this tax, different, what they call TIFs in the community, because this commission was concerned about how the county gets treated in these tax districts, right? They get no revenue, and yet, if the revenue wasn't required, they wouldn't ever require anybody to pay tax. And so the conversation says, Ron, we need to make this clear to the city that this is what's happening to us, we're getting pinched. We have $60 million worth of property taxes to work with, the rest comes from wheel tax and other options. And so we started upon ourselves to, to cut budgets, cut people, do all these types of things. At the same time, we wrote a letter to the, to the city that said, hey, we have some concerns of how you guys are operating. You just, you're taking any possibility of revenue from the county away in my lifetime to make these things happen, but yet we're provided with the pressure from all these things that happen. And they said, yep, they agreed with us. And they said, Ron, well, we, we see what the problem is, and we want to work with you guys to make it more equitable for the county, because they get all the, the sales tax, that's what they're concerned about. They had 90... They had ninety-some million dollars worth of just general tax revenue. That doesn't include the twenty million dollars of tax revenue that Rapid City got, that they pay every year, twenty million dollars, so they can open the door at the civic center. That's the tax revenue that they pay to open up the door at the civic center. So when I started the conversation with the city, I said, "Hey, listen, you know, we've talked about this, we're working through these things, we're working together on a opiate task force. We're working in a crisis center that's gonna be state of the art, but it's the city and the county doing the things together." The city has half their population of the police department in our building and pays nothing. They pay zero. So these are all part of the conversation that was taking place when Ron and I met. And it's like, "Hey, we do not want to get into this thing where we've been in the past where it's the county versus the city because seventy-five percent of the people inside the county live in the city. So how do we do this as equitable and make sense?" That also leaves, what, about forty-five thousand people that spent all their money in Rapid City. They spent all their money in the city of Rapid City with sales tax and they get nothing for it, other than they can drive the road, whatever, but they get no, no services, no nothing. And they spent twenty million of that dollars, twenty million of, of tax dollars, sales tax dollars, opening the door to the civic center just to bring people into our community when you have forty-five thousand people already here. So these things all started to, you know, this was something, the conversation that I was leading with, with the city, and how do we work through this, how do we work together? A lot of great things are happening now. We've come up with, you know, working together on the care campus and the addicted people in our community are actually gonna have some, they're gonna actually have a glimmer of hope if we can pull these things off. So it was important to me that this library thing didn't get blown out of proportion like it did when people jumped the gun with, you know, attacking us about how this was all presented and we had the conversation that we, yeah, these are things we could have done better. And then, and so they understood it. So during this conversation with Dan Ainsley and the library head and we, we had this global concern, this global conversation about how we move forward without damaging the, the progress that we've made. And Jordan, they made a proposal to us that fit what we can do for the next year. It was a proposal that said, "Hey, we know that you have a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars or whatever in your reserves and you have eighty thousand dollars set for the levy and understanding that we have to fix this problem that we inherited on this library levy." Because quite frankly, if it was, if it was all tit for tat, Box Elder wouldn't be getting any library cards, but I know they are. And how does that get communicated in the future? How, I mean, you know, so we actually, Deb and I, met with the mayor of Box Elder. They're very excited about the possibilities of a library in Box Elder. They have the opportunity to work with the air force base to, to gather all their library materials, move them to their children's museum that they have, which they want to make a destination point. Because they want to make a destination point, you know why? Because they want sales tax. Sales tax is important to Box Elder and they value the people that spend the money in Box Elder. Their sales tax revenues are up thirteen percent and when they get the Flying J opened up in, in December first of January, I would imagine those sales tax revenue increases are gonna be twenty percent plus. They're working on their children's library, it's gonna be a destination point. But all being said, during this conversation with the library and, and they understood our position about what position we're put into and how we, how we get back to ground zero. How do we, how do we, how do we try to be equitable to the library for the services that they are generating through, at least through twenty twenty-six to see where we're at and how we do that? So they made a proposal and I think that Jordan, is, do you have it anywhere? Do you have it? I mean, if it, we could make a public record somehow or something that they proposed. Basically what they proposed was, the contract was fine with them, it was, then they wanted to, they wanted to see if they could tap the reserve plus the eighty thousand for twenty twenty-six and gave us the opportunity to figure out what went wrong with his library levy because there's a lot of holes in it, like I said. So that's where we're at with it. We can either, up to the commission whether we do that today, because I do believe that, you know, from the library's perspective, they're working on their twenty twenty-six, you know, what are we gonna do? To be fair to them, they'd like to know at some, at some point, I'm, I don't know if two weeks makes a difference, but it might.
I understand. During our conversations with Rapid City Public Library yesterday, they did say that their board is not meeting again until January, no matter what. And so in January, they're going to approve whatever we approve, which is why I suggested that we approve the contracts on December sixteenth. Because then that gets us.
I'm good with that then. I'm good with that and then it gives anybody else that wants to come here and yell at me about something they don't understand to get the information, so.
Oh, Chair.
Thank you.
But they also said, Jordan, that if we could get it before then, before they sign the contract in January, actually what she said was, if we could, at least if we were gonna give them back the hundred and ninety-seven so they could move forward with that and that.
It'll help them budget.
That would help them move forward with their budget. And then if we change something by December sixteenth, meaning if we added more or whatever, that'd be different. But they would like to see if we could at least give them back the reserves if we would do that today.
And that's completely up to this commission. I don't want to tell anybody how to vote on that.
And we didn't.
And we didn't, I didn't either. Ron and I's conversation was very amicable and moving forward, we got a lot of really, really good things working out with the city, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dirk, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, a week ago Monday, Jordan and I met with the wall board, the employees and the trustees and the mayor, some of them at the meeting. It was a really good meeting, I don't know, about an hour and a half. So we explained every, the backstory, everything to them and they agreed that some of the language coming out of Rapid City was hyperbolic. And, you know, once everybody just kind of calmed down and got to the facts, they understood as to how we got here and they had, we went through the contract and Jordan, you know, went through and explained it. They came back with some thoughts and ideas and anyway, they're not ready to move on the contract. They need to, as presented to Jordan and then gave Jordan some follow-up, but anyway, they need to run it back through their board and that's why we said we would not have it at least on our agenda until the sixteenth of December. And I can't remember what their timeline was.
They were gonna hold a special session.
Special session.
They were gonna hold a meeting after they knew what the actual language of the contract was gonna be. They, like I said, they didn't have any real issues, no deal breakers in the contract language. They just wanted to make sure that it was the final draft. And to that point, if you guys would like me to walk through the contract language really quickly with you, I can, or if you've had a chance to read it, I guess we don't have to do it in public. It's just, I just realized that I don't think it's ever been presented publicly, that draft language.
And I'd like to see it presented publicly and I'd like to see the, the memos from the meeting that Deb had and you had with, with the proposal from Dan and, and the library made public too, so, you know, people can actually have a clue what they're talking about when they come in here and chew me out, so.
Chair. But I think it's fair, I think it's fair so they can move forward, at least the city, Rapid City, because the other ones weren't cut. And if they knew somewhat of the funding, if we are going to make a motion of that and, and if we don't, that's fine. But I think it's only fair at this point if we're trying to be transparent of where we want to move forward with, are we going to do that, are we not gonna do that? Are we thinking more money or are we thinking less? Or are we leaving them where they at? I think that should be fair to them to know how they move forward. The other ones already know we are through the contract. They're all the same contract, but not all the same money and how we divide that up. So I would like to see if we can move forward on that and see where we're going. Like I said, they would like to know that and to be fair and to communicate to the city, library and to the constituents how that's moving forward.
And I would just ask off of Commissioner Hancock's comment there, if you were to make a motion today, I would request that you not specifically say a hundred and ninety-seven thousand because that was an estimate if we received all of our tax revenues. We're not sure we will. Maybe we can vaguely word it to say that just all of the reserves left in the library fund or something like that, to that effect, because that amount is, is not a firm amount at this point.
So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dirk.
Yeah, I'd like to finish what I was going to say. The conversation we had with Wall and they understood it that, you know, and again, in the contract language we had, it said that there was an automatic increase of three percent every year. And we explained why we wanted that out because in this case, you know, the county did not take CVI this year, which was two point nine percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So to have automatic triggers in there that say there's gonna be automatic funding amounts every year at three percent. And a lot of this, let's remember when we went through the budget discussions, a lot of the reasons we had these discussions is because of the big discussion statewide level. I don't know what's gonna come out of the legislative session about limiting the ability for property tax growth and what that's going to do to the counties. And my other comment about voting on anything today, there is no proposal on the agenda today with financials and information that would allow me to make an informed decision. I made that decision at budget time.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Do we have any speaker requests forms?
There's two people out there if they want to speak, they can sure speak.
Just give your name for the record.
I'm Kathy Johnson and I live at, up by Hill City. And I spoke two weeks ago on the library issue and I'm very interested in it. And, and I, I just want to say I appreciate the efforts that you've taken over the last two weeks to try to bring all the parties together. And, and I, and I do have information from the auditor's office as the breakdown of those elections in terms of where they were from. So I think you can tell by looking at that breakdown if it was improperly done. And if you give me your email, I can send you those because I got them from the auditor's office here.
I also have that same information. The problem is that it does say something like the city of New Underwood and it's like, well, New Underwood shouldn't have voted, but it could have been people outside the municipality.
I see, okay.
And so there's, there's those, the, the fine points that, that's an issue.
Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, just wanted to say I appreciate the work you've been doing on this and, and I just, I'm optimistic and hopeful that a good solution can be found because, you know, I'm one of those people that I don't object, and I do pay the levy, and I don't object at all because I believe so much in the importance of the libraries. And in fact, I'd probably pay more tax than I would if I'd bought a library ticket, but I'm, I'm okay with doing that because I understand that there's a lot of little, you know, a lot of, a lot of people that it wouldn't work that way for them and that if they had to buy their library card, it, it would become unaffordable. And I'm just happy to help because it's just so important and I want to live in an educated community. And, and, and therefore we need the libraries and I'm glad to see that we're gonna work this out. So, thank you.
No, and I appreciate Ms. Johnson. I'll just make one comment that we have been working on this since day one, so, and I think that all the hyperbole just got misplaced. I mean, I tried to explain to people, some people didn't want to listen, they didn't want to hear. I make my phone number available because I want people to understand that this is not a decision made in a vacuum, there's a lot of, a lot of holes in it and we're trying to fix it. Nobody doesn't dislike the library and so, and I appreciate your comments about, you know, appreciating that. We're working hard at it. We have been working hard at it since day one and that, I would hope that message would have got out there, but it was almost impossible.
Well, I for one, I went back and listened to the recordings of the meetings and I really didn't hear much discussion about, you know, trying to work through this. And so I didn't quite understand it either, the work that had been going on. But, I mean, to me, that's sort of water under the bridge and we're here and we're moving forward and so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Have a wonderful day.
Yep. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we continue this, any voting today until the next meeting.
Okay. That's the December sixteenth meeting?
December sixteenth.
I think that's probably in order. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. A motion from Commissioner Roskin, a second from Mr. Drew's, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay, so one no.
Can I explain why, Commissioner?
Yeah, absolutely. I think.
The main thing is because we had those negotiations and they kind of wanted to move forward and that would help them unless somebody was gonna give them more money than the hundred and whatever the reserves were. But in order for them to move forward and do their budgets and stuff as well, I think it's pretty transparent that we don't have more money than that. Maybe we do, but in this case, there's other people to decide this for property taxes and stuff, just not library fees. So I thought we could come to a conclusion today for that library to move forward and on their contracts to see if they're gonna sign it or not. So I guess December sixteenth is fine, but that's why I said no. I thought there would be an understanding, not because it was one of five, I thought some other ones had talked to and them as well. Thank you.
I appreciate you having the ability to explain why because that's important when all the information out there. But I, I'll explain, one of my, one of the reasons for me is I wanted to make that information available that came from them. I didn't make this stuff up. It came from them. So I want, it came from the, the city, the, they brought this to us and said, "Here's something we can live with that makes sense without having to make major differences and changes." And it gives us the opportunity, which I'm more concerned about, of bringing the whole picture together because it's got a lot of holes in it and it's just another one adding to our, to our, our, whatever you want to call it, that we have to do. So, Commissioner Roskin, sir, I'll give everybody the same.
On the agenda, it says no specific action requested, so I think with that being said, there might have been a lot more people here today had they known that there was gonna be some kind of a vote. So that's why I think we should wait just.
Well, now they know and then, and we can actually show them, information will be made ahead of time available, so.
Yes. And as a point of clarification as well, I will be inviting each of the libraries, the boards and the staff to show up to the December sixteenth meeting, so everyone will be here as well to participate in the discussion.
Well, don't put anything else on the agenda then.
Okay, it's just gonna, it's just gonna be libraries.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Drews.
So as it sets right now, I know that we've reduced them down to that eighty thousand plus figure. In my mind, that's probably too extreme. I agree with putting back the hundred and ninety-seven thousand or whatever it may be that's in the reserve. But I was hoping that we might be able to get just a little bit more, get back to where we were only reducing it by a third of the amount, which we put it back up to about a total amount that they would receive of about three hundred and twenty thousand. I just throw that out at this point in time so it's not a surprise two weeks from now that, that that's where I would like to see us be.
And I appreciate that and having the conversations with the city and talking about the tax revenues and all that stuff, that plays into the game that we're here, that we have on the table here because they understand the position that they've put us in and that they're putting us in. Every time they do that, it's for the benefit, overall benefit of the community, the libraries for the overall benefit of the community. I, I think that cities should fund it a hundred percent, to be honest with you, and that's the comment I made to them, because of the tax revenue that they receive, I mean, I made the other comments and I'll, since I'm here, I might as well talk about it, about the arts. The arts, every year the arts comes to the city, begs for money. Every year the doll comes for the city, the museum comes for the city and begs for money. And they spend twenty million dollars a year to open the door at the civic center. Twenty million bucks, a lot of sales tax revenues they spend, but they can't, they have, the, the Doll Fine Arts, the Journey Museum, and any, any arts community in the, in the city has to come and beg for a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. To me, it's absolutely ridiculous. I won't get off of that horse and I, and I think it's absolutely ridiculous that they need money from the people outside the community to fund that library. They have the ability to do it. They throw away more money than that. And I made that comment to them and I'll tell you publicly, that's how I feel about it. It's a shame. It's a shame that they can't fund that library. It's a destination spot for people that come here for the community. They don't just come here and use the library, they're spending their taxpayer dollars. They're here. The people come from Hill City, Wall, they come from all over here. And more people come from right in this area and that civic center's proof. They got a hundred and fifty mile pole range, that's it. It's fifty miles to Wall.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll get on my soapbox, but I'm just, I just, I can't, I had to say it, I'm just getting.
When we did the vote for the budget, I agreed with eighty-one thousand, but subsequent to that, I've read every contract. And the contract for Rapid City, in my opinion, the day that we voted was a legal binding contract. And it set an amount of about four hundred and eighty thousand. And if we don't agree with that, well, we agreed with it when we signed the contract in two thousand and sixteen. We've done it every year since. And to pull the rug out, that's a terminology that I'm gonna use, that was a little drastic. And when we looked at the complete health, we agreed maybe not just shut it off, but do it in layers. So, if they were asking for a hundred or four eighty, and we did, like Gary suggested, two-thirds, that'd be three twenty. And the next year, one sixty, and the next year, half of that, eighty. And we're kinda right back to where we started in the first place. But if we do that, and if we, chances are, and I believe this is, Pennington County residents outside Rapid City limits will be charged an annual library fee. And so, the question is, what's that worth?
Chair.
You done, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I think for now.
So, if you look at, it was on six twenty-four, twenty-five, at nine thirty in the morning, we had a discussion on the library, and it was with, and I had discussed this at the contract meeting. Their librarian, their director came up, and it was specifically with Jerry Dur, and he was straight up telling her that we were probably doing some cuts and some stuff with the library. And then the consequences for her was she was going to make us pay, or the county constituents, more money if that happened. So, since I had been in, and I had told her this, this is not news, that when someone says they're gonna cut you at all, in any government entity, which we already found out from the other ones, they usually come up and discuss, or they come back and they say, are you planning on cutting us? I never saw her, and I was straight up, I said, I never seen you again since then. She said, well, I didn't think you're gonna cut, I didn't have, we didn't have the discussions again. I said, we didn't have the discussions with other people, but we did have discussions on the budgets. And most people watched those budget hearings to see if we are cutting unmandated areas and what we're doing. I said, since the beginning of time, since politics, the minute they say cut, I've always seen people come in. I never seen her again, I told her. I said, so, I just figured we were doing the eighty-one, and then she'd take the reserves and we'd move forward. And now, since after that, we approved the budget, and then we had a storm of people, mostly city people, that said, you know, you guys cut that, that was unreasonable. The time to do that is during a budget hearing to figure out what those people really want. Or even as a director, I would be concerned the minute Commissioner told me that he was thinking that that would be something that we had to look at. Everybody else took that seriously, and they came back, and we did renegotiate some of those, and some of those we did not. So, to come back after the fact, for me, was kinda like, okay, what does that mean? And I did say that to the people in the room yesterday, to be straight up. And I also told them again, it was about our budget. Three of us voted for that budget, two did not for that budget this year. It's because we had to do those cuts and those things we needed to do to make that budget come to pass, and we only raised it. And that's the miracle since it's been here that nobody's talking about. We only raised that budget with the help of our office director and his assistant, Kenner, to over only a hundred thousand. Nobody's talking about that. They're talking about the library levy and what we're charging or what we shouldn't charge people. Again, let the people vote, let them figure it out for us if they want it. Make sure the people that are supposed to vote, that's the main thing, are voting, that are paying the levy, not the people that aren't. Bottom line is, we have to take everybody's concerns, and the biggest concern, and everybody knows that in the room, and the elephant in the room was property taxes. They have stuff going on at the state with it, they have stuff going on with the cities, the counties, and all these different areas, but people are talking about a library. I understand, and I think the library's important, but again, property taxes were the main issue. We did what we were supposed to do as county people with the money we had to spend in order to take care of those property tax owners. We did, you don't reduce property taxes unless you reduce your budgets, counties, cities, schools, and states. We did that. Nobody's giving us the credit that way. That was huge. That's a miracle. Since I've been in politics, I'll keep saying it, who does that? That was huge. That was done with not trying to be facetious towards the library, and I told them that. We weren't trying to be facetious, we were trying to balance our budget, because our taxpayers, our county taxpayers, which is everybody in the cities and the counties, wanted us to reduce our budgets so they could reduce, hopefully, the levies through the property taxes, at least from one entity. Make an example how to do it. So, those are my comments on that. And we haven't talked about that with our constituents, and we haven't set that forth with the library people. It's not that we don't like your library, or we don't think it's important. We have to take all the constituents in consideration and what they wanna be taxed for. So, that's, that should be a full understanding that people forgot.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jordan, if we do, is there talk about doing a special election again on this?
Well, I think we've had the conversation about it, I think, that because there's so many holes in what's going on.
Right.
We don't know who's paying, who's not paying, who's.
But if we do go forward, I was just gonna ask Jordan if he could go to the auditor and just give me an idea what that special election's gonna cost the taxpayers.
There cannot be a special election for the library services.
I see, okay.
So, the libraries have to happen in the general election. And so, that would be the normal, not the primary, not a special election. It has to happen on the general election's ballot.
And that would be.
And that's, that would be in twenty twenty-six in November. And I did speak to Sabrina, the auditor, and she had mentioned that it's not gonna be an additional cost to just add another county initiative measure.
I've been giving you guys a lot of leadway here, because we have a motion on the floor, but I wanna give these guys.
The motion's done. You guys already.
We voted for it. Wow, okay. To that, I apologize.
Chair, so, we did, we did visit with that about yesterday, about the election. So, the election has to be general election. What that was is, why we said that is, we wanted to work with the library, with the county, find the numbers, find the people, find where we're going, figure out, and hopefully, that would help with us with the libraries on the twenty-six budget, in one sense, to know all those levies and all those things that are gonna be accounting for. And then, the commission can vote themselves to put it on a ballot. It doesn't have to go to a referendum. Okay.
Which is a good idea, I think the city should have that option too, but I don't, for whatever reason, they don't do it. Anyway, so we'll go to item eighteen, items from Chair.
Mr. Chair, I just have one quick.
I will give you the opportunity.
No, just one quick follow-up, and, because we've already voted.
This really kinda covers item eighteen.
Had chatter, but I'm just going to, it's really not a point of clarification, it's just a comment. And that goes back to the other entities that we cut. And so, you know, the other outside entities that we, you know, reduce their budgets, that's coming from the general fund. And the difference about the library is we have a specific library for the library levy, and so, there's a different revenue stream for the library than there is for the other non-mandated's that we cut. So, that's my comment.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
It's convoluted.
I learned something every meeting, and so, I learned something today.
Okay, cool. So, item eighteen, I guess, we'll start with Gary. I mean, you've been quiet, so I'll give you the first opportunity to. Globate. Get us out of here, Gary.
I, as far, are we talking?
You wanna combine eighteen and nineteen?
We were supposed to, I apologize.
I thought we was gonna do that.
Let's do that.
We were supposed to.
Okay.
So, we'll go to you first.
Okay, so I did attend the Elevate Board meeting, the Complete Health meeting, and I was on the phone with the WIR, WIR Steering Committee. And most of that discussion with the Steering Committee was relative to the SRS funds, which is simply like the PILT funds that come back to counties in lieu of taxes. And so, the PILT funds have been renewed at this point in time in the farm bill, and the effort now has been turned to trying to convince the Congress to at least renew the SRS.
So, that SRS.
Which is a much smaller amount, but we do, I mean, Pennington County.
It's a revenue source that.
It is.
I mean, it's making up for the taxes they don't pay?
That's right, that's right. So, that's where that effort is going. Elevate talked quite a bit about their budget, where that was going for this year. Complete Health, at the last meeting, they didn't actually have a quorum, so they couldn't vote on business, but went over the financials and so forth. And that's a, you know, the time element for them is very critical, is to, when they receive their funds and the government being shut down and stuff, I mean, is not help matters at all. But they do provide lots of service for indigent.
Right. So, do they, we're trying to involve them in on these opium, you know, because I'm sure that they have some concerns about how that's all gonna take place with Monument and Avera partnerships, and now we got Sanford coming, and so, they have, I mean, they're doing pretty good over there. I think they stretch their dollars about as best as they possibly can.
They do.
Yeah. And they really provide a good service. And I think they can, actually, they can actually bill in some instances where, you know, where the county can't, and looking at the opium task force on the crisis center or whatever, that part that we're trying to do, it gives, with having a provider, it gives opportunity to start billing some Medicaid for the indigent stuff, so.
Right.
There's some exciting stuff happening. Thanks, Gary. Jared? I have nothing, other than I'm gonna steal your thunder on Elevate tomorrow. Apologize, I'm probably gonna steal your PowerPoint presentation, just kinda update it or whatever, if you're okay with that? I mean, okay.
All right, fine. But if you're gonna do it tomorrow, you probably aren't gonna have an audience, yeah.
So, I don't need any hecklers out there, though. So, Deb?
Yep, we had, in the Pennington County housing redevelopment, we had the audit done, and we did well. And then we also did our percentage for our people, for their salaries and stuff on Pennington County housing. We redid our building for more space, a little, used the space we had, but just redid some of the offices, that turned out well. We also had somebody tell us that we're selling our building, the big memorial building with all the elderly in it, that is not being sold. We're doing a different way, it's called the RAD conversion, so we're helping more people. Pennington County still owns that housing high-rise. Again, it's not being sold. It's same owner, just converting so we can help more people into what's called the RAD conversion. So, we did well on our audit. Our CEO and our employees for Pennington County Housing are pretty amazing in what they do for people. Planning Commission, you kinda saw what we did, and we had a good discussion on roosters, chickens, and things like that, that we thought we all knew about, but pretty good discussion. They have a good group of people on the Planning Commission, and they run a really tight ship there, so I appreciate them. Thank you.
County housing is probably truly the only real affordable housing option in our communities, so they're big. I mean, when you're talking about people that can go in and get vouchers or whatever, and that's another thing that happens a lot in the community. People don't see what's happening behind the scenes with the county and the city, and trying to get those messages out there gets complicated, because they really do work hard, and they really spend millions of dollars, you know, on a particular population of the community. So, Commissioner Roskin, sir.
Okay, so, yeah, eleven nineteen twenty-five, Pennington County housing redevelopment, a couple other things. We talked about our Public Housing Authority Administration Plan and our capital five-year plan. And then that same day, after that meeting, I met with Terry, Director of the Rapid City Library, got a tour of the Rapid City Library, and first time I've ever been in there, and I was really impressed. I mean, when you walk in there, they got three or four fishing poles, and kids wanna go fishing, and they don't have poles. They can have a fishing pole, so, pretty broad spectrum of services. The next day, Jordan and I met with the Hill City Library and their board, and kinda outlined, or we presented the proposed contract, and there again, we discussed that pretty much in depth. After that, I, or before that, I attended a Hill City Economic Development Corporation meeting, which probably the one thing that we do is we do offer revolving loans, so. Then on the twentieth, we, Deb and I, attended Emergency Management Meeting. Probably the one thing that I got out of that is they kinda discussed the power outage we had. And, you know, are we gonna have, that one was a, somewhere a mistake was made, but we're talking about the ones that Black Hills Energy's talking about. We get the right conditions, they're just gonna start shutting segments of the county down. That's the one that concerns me, especially water systems, because I operate a water system, it's a small water system. But I did get a survey last year, and they said if your system didn't have electricity for forty-eight hours, or how long could it last without electricity? Not very long for ours. On twenty-first, Ron and I met with the Mayor of Rapid City, Finance Officer and the Director of the Library, and we've already talked about that. The next day, Jordan and I met with the Keystone Library, same thing as the Hill City Library. They just, they'd like to see this working relationship between the Rapid City Library and the other twelve libraries continue. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing.
Yep.
The, one of my neighbors, they reached out to me and said, they went to the last Hill City Council meeting, and they'd like to put a kiosk, a vehicle registration kiosk, in Hill City somewhere. And so, I reached out to Annette to ask just how that would work. And so, the, I didn't go to that city council meeting, but the city, they realized that there'd be a buy-in, and it seemed to me like the city would be, at least sit down and talk about it. The mayor said, I've got a year left, if we're gonna do it, let's make sure we do it in that one year. We're just starting, taking small steps. Annette has agreed to go, not December the eighth, but the next, I think, the twenty-second. Well, I'm gonna try to go, and that's gonna go, and we're just gonna see what it's gonna take, but not asking anything from the county, we're just, but the state is the one that kinda controls it, so. Annette's only gonna be there in the capacity that she goes, is just to explain what you need to do with the state. And then, we've also, I think her name's Rosa, with the South Dakota Department of Revenue. Eventually, we'll, if we think we're making any traction, we'll invite her. And I just think that would take, that's probably a forty-mile drive from Hill City to here. And if we could, and that's Hill City, and if you got somebody that lives by Deerfield, it's even further, so, we're working on that.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, do we have executive session today?
No.
No. So, we're looking for a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, again?
A motion to second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.